Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to this November 22nd work session. Thank you for joining us. And Madam Superintendent, whenever you're ready to get started.
Good afternoon, everyone. We're gonna start, I'm gonna switch the order a little bit because we do have some guests, our auditors are here and they have a pretty packed day. So, yes Angela, thank you. I'll slide them in front of you a little bit. I also like to ask the board members that as we're having questions, please wait till we recognize you, the lady that they're transcribing or having a hard time hearing who's asking what and who's saying what. So if we can please be mindful of that as we're asking questions and talking so they can make sure, they can have some complete minutes. So Mr. Corone, if you would like to bring them first so they can come up?
Can I have Mr. Dembo?
Okay, thank you.
There's no reports, right Angela? You're ready to go?
I can't access the agenda for what it's worth, but it's not coming up on me. It doesn't really matter, I can follow along.
Okay. Do you want us to give you a paper copy?
Yeah, it'd be nice if somebody needs one.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I wanted to introduce Mr. Mark Arroyo with the State Auditor's Office. To give the board a little background, they actually came into the office to do two audits this year, the financial audit and the operational audit. And they came in initially in March of last year and we're here at about Christmas. So we got a chance to work closely with them for about nine months there. And Mark is here to report out to you on the financial audit only at this point in time. And I do want to say that we had a really good working relationship over that period. And I want to thank my staff and all the other departments that helped respond to the questions by the Auditor General's Office. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mark to allow him to report out to the board for the 2018 audit.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Mark Arroyo, I'm the supervisor of the Auditor General's Lakeland Office. First, I would like to thank district staff for their cooperation during our audits this year. Today, we're gonna go over the audit results of the district's comprehensive annual financial report, also known as the CAFR, for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2018. First, an overview of the Auditor General's Office. The Florida Auditor General's Office is responsible for conducting financial and federal single audits of all 67 school districts in the state. For the 30 counties like Polk with populations of 150,000 or more, we are responsible for conducting financial and federal single audits on a triennial basis and operational audits at least once every three years. Regarding the financial statement audit, we conduct financial audits in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and applicable standards contained in the government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller of the United States. The objective of the combined financial and federal single audit, what to express opinions is whether the opinion units that collectively comprise the district's basic financial statements, prepared by management with the oversight of those charged with governance, are fairly presented in all material respects in conformity with the accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America for the fiscal year June 30, 2018. Determine whether the district's schedule of expenditures of federal awards, also known as the CIFA, for the fiscal year June 30, 2018 is fairly stated in all material respects in relation to the district's basic financial statements taken as a whole. Gain an understanding of the district and its environment, including its internal control, and assess the risk of material misstatement necessary to plan the audit and to determine whether the district has established and implemented inadequate system of internal control. And also, to determine whether the district complied with applicable laws, rules, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements, noncompliance with which could have a direct and material effect on the determination of amounts reported on the district's financial statements, and to determine whether the district complied with the types of compliance requirements that are applicable to each of the major federal programs. Our audits were conducted on the basis that management acknowledges and understands its responsibility for the preparation and fair presentation of the district's basic financial statements in accordance with the accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America and all accompanying information, and the CIFA in accordance with the Uniform Guidance as well as all representations contained therein. Encompassed in that responsibility are the establishment and maintenance of effective internal control over financial reporting and federal programs, the selection and application of appropriate accounting policies and principles, the safeguarding of assets, the prevention and detection of fraud, and the identification and disclosure of noncompliance with significant laws, rules, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. We plan to perform the audit to provide reasonable rather than absolute assurance of detecting material noncompliance or misstatements that, in our judgment, could have direct and material effect on the district's financial statements, its opinion unit, major federal program administration, and the CIFA taken as a whole. Because of the inherent limitations of an audit, together with the inherent limitations of internal control, an unavoidable risk that some material misstatements may not be detected exists. Even though the audit is properly planned in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, consequently, our audit will not necessarily detect all noncompliance or misstatements that might exist due to error or fraud. In addition, an audit is not designed to detect error or fraud that is immaterial to the basic financial statements. We did not audit the financial statements of the school's internal funds, which represent 8% of the assets of 18% of the liabilities out of the aggregate remaining fund information. In addition, we did not audit the financial statements of the aggregately discreetly presented component units, which represents 100% of the transactions and account balances of the aggregate discreetly presented component unit columns. Those statements were audited by other auditors whose reports have been furnished to us. In our opinions, insofar as they relate to the amounts included in the school's internal funds and aggregately discreetly presented component units, are based solely on the reports of the other auditors. The introductory and statistical sections have not been subjected to the auditing procedures applied in the audit of the basic financial statements, and accordingly, we do not express an opinion or provide any assurance on that. For the financial audit of the district for the 1718 fiscal year, we provided three separate reports. An independent auditor's report on the district's financial statements, a report on the internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements in accord with government auditing standards, and a report on compliance for each major federal program, and a report on internal control over compliance required by the Uniform Guidance. In our report on compliance for each major federal program, we opined on district compliance with federal requirements that had a material effect on the child nutrition cluster and the magnet school assistance program, classified as major programs, federal programs. Our reports for the 1718 fiscal year were released on December 17, 2018. In those reports, we issued an unmodified or clean opinion on each of the district's major funds and aggregate remaining funds presented on the financial statements, and a clean opinion on the district's compliance with the requirements of the two major federal programs. As part of the independent auditor report of the district's financial statements, we included an emphasis of matter regarding the implementation of Government Accounting Standard Board Statement Number 75, Accounting for Financial Reporting for Post-Employment Benefits Other Than Pensions, which is a change in accounting principles that address accounting and financial reporting for other post-employment benefits, also known as OPED. This affects the comparability of the amounts reported in the 1718 fiscal year with the amounts reported on the 1617 fiscal year. Implementation resulted in a decrease in the beginning net position of $4.8 million. Our financial audits did not identify any material noncompliance or weaknesses in the internal control considered to be material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Material noncompliance is noncompliance with provisions, laws, rules, regulations, contracts, or grant agreements that has a material effect on the financial statements. A financial statement material weakness is a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies in internal controls such as there is a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement of the district's financial statements will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis. A financial statement significant deficiency is a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in internal control that is less severe than a material weakness, yet important enough to merit attention by those charged with governance. In addition, we cited no material noncompliance, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies associated with the two major federal programs we audited. Highlights of the CAFR include district assets exceeding liabilities close at the close of the fiscal year by $643.6 million. This amount is the district's net position. Overall, the district's net position decreased by $9.8 million from the prior year because of expenditures exceeding revenues for the fiscal year. The district's total long-term liabilities, which includes bonds, certificates of participation, OPED liabilities, pension liabilities, and compensated absences decreased $25.5 million or 3.1% from the prior fiscal year. The changes were primarily because of principal payments on bonds and certificates of participation exceeding the increases of the district's share pension liabilities. The district, effective December 2017, is no longer serves as the fiscal agent of the Florida School Retirement Benefits Consortium. The assets and liabilities of the consortium were sent to the Deval County School Board. Consequently, there will be not the activity for the consortium presented in the district's financial statements in future periods. The district's general fund assigned and unassigned fund balances represented 4.5% of total revenue. Section 1011.51 of Florida Statute requires the superintendent to notify the board and FDOE if this percentage drops below 3%, and if the percentage drops below 2%, a corrective action plan must be developed. This concludes the presentation on the audit results of the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2018. Anyone have any questions?
Questions? Ms. Wilson?
I should probably know this, but what are the two major programs that we audited?
For federal?
Yes, federal programs.
That was the child nutrition cluster and the magnet school assistance program.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Townsend, you have a question?
Can you address the $4.8 million related to the pension thing again, I guess in a little more human English, no offense?
During the current fiscal, that fiscal year, the GAZB implemented Statement 75, which changed reporting requirements for post-employment benefits. This implementation caused a prior period adjustment or adjustment to the beginning balance of $4.8 million just because of the implementation. That dollar amount actually comes from your actuaries that prepared that report. So it's not like it's a number you guys directly manipulated, it's something that is copied from an actuarial report.
So is that something that, like, is that a real amount of money or is it just kind of the way we're accounting for it? Like, I mean, is that $4.8 million out of what we have to spend for moving ahead?
No, it's more of a GAZB entry for completing the CAFR, but there is no check or disbursement of dollars of the $4.8 million. It's just a statement, a note that we have to make and it's purely presentation only.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll go back up to our first item. And this is our item that's gonna be brought forward by Ms. Usher. I asked this one come for discussion because again, after we had the sales tax, you know, I want to make sure that the public understands what we're doing with those dollars. So this is gonna talk about the new high school that we're looking to begin construction on. And I asked that Ms. Usher come forward, followed by her, Mr. Corone is gonna come up. So the county tag team in here because it goes hand in hand with the upcoming projects, item two will, with the resolution with the upcoming projects that's being brought forward. So we wanted to make sure we put those together. So Ms. Usher and then Mr. Corone.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, I'm here to talk about the new educational specifications for the high school, but I would like to go back with some history. We know that the Northeast area has really been growing. We have two high schools in the area, Hain City and Ridge Community. At that time, they were at overcapacity. So we know that we needed enrollment relief for these schools and to accommodate the rapid And so what we did, we visited some high schools throughout the state to find, to try to find a prototype that meets our needs in regards to safety and compactness. We found a school in Hernando County, Wickewatchee High School, designed by Schenkel Schultz, and we really did like that school. So we came back and we started working on the capital plan, the five-year capital plan, and we included this school in the plan at the 1800 capacity. The board adopted this plan on September 4, 2018. And then the process began because we now to have a school that meets the needs for the students, staff, and the community, we need an educational specification. So in October, we had a meeting with all the stakeholders. We had teaching and learning, design, let me see where all the people were. IT was there, safety and security, transportation, the deputy superintendent, fine arts, so learning support, school nutrition. So everybody was there for the kickoff of the educational specification. We had the first meeting in October and we met individually with all the stakeholders and now we have a draft. At that time, when the plan was adopted in September 4, 2018, we had the school design at 1800 with an area for classroom addition for future needs. We weren't so certain about funding and we knew we needed capacity right away. In December, on December 11, 2018, the board approved the awarding, the contractor Schenkel Schultz for the high school and setting up the project with $6 million coming for preconstruction from impact fees. So the plan started. We have the draft, we have the draft ed specs, educational specification that was distributed to all the stakeholders. We got comment back from learning support, from fine arts, from different people, and we included those in the ed specs. We then met with the architect to, sorry, I'm saying all this, I didn't say the programs. And Dr. Ices, if you want to come in here, the programs for the high school, their hospitality and hotel management, technology, modeling and gaming, and the fine arts academy. And these are just brief, like the fine arts will have dance, theater band, orchestra, chorus, and visual arts. We have the culinary arts, hospitality, horticulture, landscape, fashion, technology. In computer programming, we have digital video, digital camera, modeling and simulation, and applied engineering technology. So all the stakeholders had to review the ed specs. The purpose of an ed specs is to make sure that the facilities that they are designed to accommodate that program. So before the architects start designing, we have to know the spatial relationship. And the educational specification that we have before you is a generic one for high school, but it is modified to accommodate the programs. While we were doing that and we continued doing utilization and track development and track growth, we decided we had to increase the capacity to 2,500. We had so many subdivisions approved and built out was so quickly, so we went from the 1800 and we moved the capacity up to 2,500. So all the classroom space will be built out right away. Okay. So we're still working educational specification. We had a meeting with the architect and he's trying to put our needs down on paper for us. The educational specification shows a design capacity of 2,500. Again, this is a guideline, this can change, with teaching stations of 109, the total building being 330,314 square feet, and the gross square foot per student is 132. So I spoke to him today, he said he has two conceptual already that he will send, he's working with the engineer and he'll send back to us to review. So he's working on design. I have here a little floor plan. The reason why we like the building, I don't have a pointer, but up front in the orange, we have the different academic houses, the light blue area is admin, and above admin is the media center. We have a nice courtyard, the blue area is the gym, and the purple that will be the cafeteria, and the area out on the right will be the auditorium. And the auditorium, so it can be accessible for even events off by itself. So that's more or less the concept and it is compact. We have only 60 acres, so we have to make sure we can accommodate everything on site and regarding, also including the athletic facilities. Develop, again, these elevations are just some of the schools that Schenkel Schultz built. We can work with them on our elevation for a school when it comes to that. We advertise in December for construction manager. We have received those reports. We will shortlist on Thursday and we hope to bring a contract to you in February to award it to a construction manager. We have to go to the county for approval, so we'll take that to the local government, we'll refine design and start construction. We are hoping that we can start phase one construction in August. That's mainly site work while we get all the approvals, not just from the county, but we'll need from the water management district and all the special districts. And then, we're hoping that we can go upright in December of this year with a completion date of June 2021 and for the students to occupy the facility in August 2021. This is just something to show that why we need the 2,500. We look at the five-year projection and being quite conservative, over the five year, we'll need like 2,200. We have a new high school at 2,500. Over the five year, we have a 95% utilization. In our long-range plan, we also have another high school, but not right now. So primarily, it's enrollment relief to Ridge, which is at 132% right now, we're not counting the portables, and Hain City at 109. With the portable, the average is 111, without the portable, the average is 120%. So it's not just enrollment relief, but it's also to accommodate growth. I put this in because cost is really important to us and I know to you also, and we have to make sure that we adhere to the state cost per student station, which is 33,937. Being real liberal here, we haven't engineered or did anything to take out the cost, we're at 80 million, with 242 per square foot, which is, that's within range, and the student station cost is 32,000, which is below the DOE recommended cost that we cannot exceed it. And this is having all the programs from our auditorium, everything to meet the programs that we want to accommodate at this school and provide. So I went through this already. September 4, the board approved the capital plan. December 11, the school board awarded the contractor Schenkel Schultz for architectural design and put $6 million from impact fees for preconstruction. Today, we're reviewing the ed specs. The architect said we'll have the complete site and floor plans by May. In June, we'll have all the approvals from the county and special district and start early site construction in August, going upright in the summer 2019 with a June 21 high school completion date. And that's it. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Okay. Ms. Wilson, Ms. Millie.
I had a couple of questions, mainly because I work in a theater, so this is, seems to be my life lately, but bathrooms in the auditorium are, I looked because it said that they were listed in the section about the auditorium, but couldn't find anything about it.
I'm certain there'll be bathrooms in the auditorium.
Okay. I just, it didn't appear that they were in the dressing rooms. Well, it said that they would be there, but as far as how many?
Right.
Everybody needs to use the bathroom in the same 15 minutes?
Mm-hmm.
But it just, I'd like to see how many bathrooms at some point, because I'm so excited for a arts school to be going up there.
Great.
That's awesome.
And Beth Cummings has been really hands-on with that too.
She even visited the school.
Yeah.
She was able to look at the school.
Ms. Millie, other question?
Hi. Can you explain a little bit about what you use to project? Because we talked about this when we met individually. We under-projected enormously for Citrus Ridge. So what, can you talk about the tools you utilize to make projection for students and growth for this school?
Well, it goes back to the ethnography, certainly. You do the trends that's going on, you're taking your, I mean, we don't have to go all the way to fertility rate because we're rolling up the eighth grade. We're looking at build-out, you know, we work closely with all the local governments. They send us their subdivision, we get their build-out rate, how many permits they're submitting. We have generation rate for the different types of residential unit, and we use that to project. So we have all the subdivision approval and the build-out rate from the local government. We meet quarterly with them and we compare notes to make sure that we're capturing the growth and also account for the attrition moving up from the eighth grade into the high school.
So you feel like we've done, we'll have a better projection for this school than we did the last one in that area?
I definitely think so.
Okay, thank you.
And I will say that Angela Ashley is with the Buildings Association. She attends those meetings with them as well, so she's in conversation. What happened with us at Citrus Ridge was not that we under, totally under-projected, it was that line, where we had some students still across that line, and then when Citrus Ridge went up, those students came back. They live in Polk, but they were not going to school in Polk, a lot of them. So they were never in our system for us to actually project from our system too. So we saw that. The goal here was when we looked at the high school to make sure we built it big enough so we didn't have to drop portables down. So I was glad to see those numbers, it went up to 2,500. We have our current high school well over 2,500 now.
It's a brand-new building, so it will attract people who may have gone elsewhere.
Right. We take into account the new school effect because we know that we see that when we open new schools, so we have to take that into account.
Thank you.
Ms. Fields and Ms. Fortin.
My question was similar to Ms. Miller. So what's the backup plan if by some chance we end up being at capacity almost immediately after we open the doors? Portables? Or you haven't thought that part? Okay.
I don't want to say portables because I'm trying to decrease portables. I'm trying to get rid of all our old portables, but I think we'll be okay.
Ken, I'd like to add, with this site, we have that land already with the Citrus site. We didn't have, we couldn't build out anymore on that concrete block. But with this one, I think we'll still have, we have to add another module. We have any space left?
We do have space. It's next to the middle school. We can do some cross-access to kind of save space, so we have different things we can do if we have to. But Mrs. Fields, I hope we don't have to.
I think not either, but it's always good to be proactive. And the other thing is, I'm sure that we're working very close to the county?
Yes.
And that's probably happening to make sure that the growth projected is pretty much on target.
Right, very much so. I have meetings from, emails from the county this morning, and I'm meeting with them today at 3 o'clock. So we're working closely.
Ms. Fortin?
How many acres did you say it was? I missed that.
This, it's a little over 60 acres.
60?
But we have the middle school next door.
And when it talks about educational specifications, there were some bullet points there. And of course, I'm gonna ask about the functionality of the labs and for instruction and stuff because I know that everything sounds real good on paper until you actually get a teacher in there and it doesn't function. For example, at Stan Ball, you can't move those tables. Am I going in the right direction? And I tried to look up, but it just kind of is, could you explain that to me?
Ms. Fortin, the ed spec is the guideline. We have had all these meetings with the stakeholders and how they want the labs, what size, how they want the classrooms next to it. So we've had those meetings and the spatial relationship, and that will be developed in the design and then we'll come back and review that with everybody.
Good.
So we will make sure we incorporate their input into the design.
And I'm just trying to understand here, I went out to Lockman Oaks and unfortunately, I did not make it out of their parking lot during dismissal.
That is.
That's why I can't stand the moment.
Yeah. And it was just a nightmare for the people coming in, and dangerous because that's a pretty busy road that it sits on. And I just wanted to kind of bring that out. And then on page 10, it talks about the optimum site. And I guess basically I'm gonna ask, was it clear to me, was that a development, optimum site development? Will those?
What does it say? What does it say? Sorry, I'll try to find it.
Page 10.
Uh-huh. The traffic circulation, we're porking, for you.
I'm looking on the electronic agenda, but the development, it's basically the facilities, will they be installed from the get-go, the football field, the track?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Okay, I just didn't get the whole thing.
Yes, all the amenities, all the athletic facilities will be there.
Bleachers, all the playgrounds.
Everything.
Gotcha.
It will be phases.
That was my question.
Ms. Wilson?
So I have a question about the athletic facilities also. Clearly, this is a full suite of athletic facilities. You know, given that we have some financial concerns in the district, and at times, we haven't provided a full suite of athletic facilities for some high schools, was there any consideration given to maybe having folks share facility somewhere? Or is that not something?
No, we haven't talked about that because we go back to the, I guess, equity and is it Title something?
Yeah.
No, is it Title VI or Title IX?
Nine.
Title IX. Where we have to have, we feel with our facilities, if we had start, if we implement that district-wide, I could see probably that's something we can do district-wide, but I don't see how we could just move for the school.
Yeah, but.
That's a good thought.
Yeah, something for thought moving forward because of, you know, we do have some financial challenges and that may allow us an opportunity to open some other schools that are needed around the county. Some schools can share athletic facilities for example.
I think certainly it's a directive from the board county-wide, but we'll locate to it and we can move to that. And we can move to that.
I was just going to ask about student parking. It said in here that student parking would be provided for up to 20% of capacity. Is that pretty standard across the district?
That is standard for us. It's one-one for staff and teachers, but 20%. Because in the high school, only the upper grades drive and they all don't drive.
That's all Ms. Fortin.
Yeah, I want to kind of follow up with what he was saying because I can remember when Lake Region High was open, I don't think we put in bleachers for them and stuff like that. I think the parent groups did all that, you know, back in the day. So, and I understand the equity thing. But, you know, didn't we just buy Lakeland a stadium or something? You know, so how much would the athletic facilities cost?
I just have, we haven't broken it down. We just have the total 80 million dollars that include everything. Completely comprehensive high school.
Mr. Townsend?
So I wanted to ask about the arts component. So it looks like that's going to be essentially the East Polk answer to Harrison. Is that kind of what we're imagining that being as a whole?
I wouldn't say it's the answer to Harrison. I said, but what you want to do is make sure we build out those programs on that side of the county as well. I don't try to put those schools in competition with Harrison.
Well, let me, I guess, there are kids who.
Davenport.
There are kids from East Polk who come across to Harrison. I guess the better way of saying my question is, are we going to try to steer East Polk kids to this and I guess West Polk kids to Harrison? Is there going to be some geographical element there? Because if, I mean, I can see a circumstance where you have Lakeland kids, like say, who didn't get into Harrison going over and taking spots at this place. And so I'm just curious if we've thought about that interplay and.
I don't think we look at it in that aspect. I think one of the things we did, when we talked to some of the Davenport students, they won't, because of ride, they don't travel down there to continue that, you know, direction that they were doing in Davenport School of the Arts. So that'd give that option up in that area. They may draw back from that Harrison, but it wasn't, it's actually to give the opportunity to that east side of the county where we're not getting those kids. When they leave Davenport, they don't go to Harrison.
Okay, well, I mean, I get that and that makes sense. But I think we should monitor to make sure, because there is quite a bit of east-to-west traffic and for Harrison. And I think you're likely to get kids like from Frostruth who might come up to this place. And I think it's likely with 500 kids to turn into kind of an East Polk Harrison, which they need. I'm very, very, very supportive of that. I just think we should probably monitor how, what the enrollment patterns are there. And secondly, can I keep, can I ask one more question?
Just go ahead.
Second, what did I have? I forgot it, sorry.
Ms. Fortin?
Just one more comment. If you can open a new school in Polk County without portables, I will buy your dinner.
Oh, I have, I'm sorry. Good for you.
I got it over.
One is following up on what Sarah said. I think you would probably, my sense is the stakeholders who have looked at the design of things are administrative-level stakeholders rather than on-the-ground stakeholders. I would urge you, when you get the design, to bring a couple of agents in to say, okay, this makes sense. This doesn't make sense. It's entirely possible that you nailed it completely.
That's a good idea.
But I would think, you know, for any of the on-the-ground, actual folks involved. And secondly, when we opened Citrus Ridge back two years ago, one of the concerns I heard was the impact on the other schools. And there was a, there wasn't particularly good coordination between principals with the district about what happened when that school was opened. I'd love for us, and I think the school is going to attract a lot of people. And we need to be thinking about what the effects on Haynes City and Ridge are going to be and getting both of the principals involved and having some kind of plan for addressing the magnet effect that's going to happen with this school one way or another. If it pulls more people in overall or if it pulls people away from them, or you just, so I hope that.
And that's a good point. I think one of the things is, I wanted to get a timeline so now if you go and build in and we need to start having those community meetings, we can build that. But I wanted the board to see what we're thinking as a big picture. I know you got a question from Kristina as well and another board member did. But I want to set a timeline, so we have a frame for where we're going and in. And in-between, we do need to have community meetings because it's going to impact. And we're already thinking ahead of what do we do with that extra group of kids when we got portable city? How do we start a transition? Do we need a transition lock? How do we think about that ahead of time? So we will have those community groups involved. Back to Ms. Fortin.
That was actually the last two points that I had. It would be really nice if you had actual folks that do the job, boots on the ground, to look at what's been done by the district level. Because I'm sure somebody thought they knew what they were talking about when they designed the classroom I just left. And it was horrid. And they all were like that. So, you know, that's number one. And number two, coordinating of maybe a fact sheet on what happened as far as opening those new schools. Good and what didn't happen so well when you speak with possibly the building folks in that area.
Okay.
Move to. Ms. Wilson?
I just wanted to follow up on what Mr. Townsend had mentioned about the arts program. So it will not be an audition-based program like Harrison is?
We didn't set it for audition. And I don't think we, Beth didn't say that. I don't think we're that far down the road. But we didn't look at it as an audition base. But we'll keep you posted with where she's going in the direction.
Yeah, I said we need to think about the interplay between the two of them.
Especially families, which I know Lauren has a lot more connections with that Polk School of the Arts. But the families that I've talked to that attend that Polk School of the Arts, I think have in their mind that it could be an audition-based and basically Harrison on the east side of the county. So if that's not what's happening, then.
We'll get the clarification with Beth, how she's designing that program. So we'll make sure we get the clarification. Let's might.
Yes, ma'am. A lot of that goes back to what you're trying to do with relief with enrollment versus making it an academy. And I know there's a whole school thought, two different ways out there on that. So, you know, I think right now we're looking at it as a comprehensive high school that has a full complement of both CT programs and arts programs and if the desire of the board. And I think we're still probably a year away from that, depending on continuing to watch the enrollment. If the desire of the program is to leave it as a traditional high school or the desire of the board to take it into an academy, that would be discussed at that time. I think we all agree right now, we just need 2,500 student stations. And how would that, what would be the effects of making it an academy? And Beth has not said, she stated like Ms. Burge that we want to have a full arts program there. Nothing's been mentioned about that.
Well, that's. So just to that point, though, if you read this, it's 1,700 kids or however many it is, like plus 500 kids, that's for a fine arts academy. And that's what the agenda item says. I get that we're down the road and we could address that. But as of right now, I certainly read it as 1,700 to 2,000, that's enrollment relief. And then 500, that's a, I don't know if it's going to be audition-based or not, but it's a specialized academy that recruits or people have to apply into. So I think we just need to be thinking about, I mean, that's a fantasy.
Yes, ma'am. We'll get clarification. Are there any other questions on the new high school? Mr. Perron?
So, yeah, so Mrs. Usher wants to start spending that money and probably already has to start some of the projects or some of the things with the high school. And so what this resolution that you have in front of you allows is that if you decide to bond this project or any other one that she has on the list, any expenses before we go bond, you can reimburse and put that under the bonding and then we will obviously recoup the money that she spent out of parent funds. So that's what that is. And that's why we went back-to-back because there's a window of, I think, 90 days.
Ms. Wilson?
I just caught this, so I apologize if it's in the resolution somewhere. But is this, are we saying that we would only cover this with sales tax? Could we include?
I don't believe this.
I saw the word "sales tax" in the intro, so maybe that was. We could also use impact fees.
Correct.
I think Mr. Townsend?
On the expression of intent to bond, I want to make sure, I don't remember having that discussion. If we did and that was.
We're going to have it soon.
Okay.
What we want to do is to make sure we kind of get everything out there so you can see how we're moving forward with the sales tax and what's coming forward. So, because I want to keep this in the forefront for the public. That's one thing we did here. They did not know what we were doing.
This doesn't obligate anyone to bond anything, but you can't bond anything without.
Ms. Miller, then Ms. Fields.
I just want to confirm that because, you know, being around a long time, we had issues with bonding and the public had issues with it. So what you're saying is this is what we could do, but all of this, all of the extra information will come later to the exact number of what will take place or what we can improve to take place. Okay.
Ms. Fields?
Basically, just this is the last.
I think this one is close.
So this is a last option.
It is an option. I think it just gives you more flexibility.
Because one of the things that I heard a lot when I was campaigning was about us bonding and trying to steer away from that. So I think it's very good, as Ms. Burge just said, that it's openly being discussed and transparent so that there won't be any concerns. And if we do have to do the bonding, we can give a rational reason as to why and how we're going to take care of getting rid of that bond.
Ms. Wilson?
And I might clarify, but I might muddy things up, I don't know. We're doing this in preparation of the potential bond. Correct. So that if we decide to do that, everything's in place and we'll move forward so it won't be a two- or three-month delay if the board at some point in time decides, at some point in time decides they want to bond something, whatever that might be. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is.
Ms. Miller? And the number is given, my computer's slow, I can't bring that up. It's turning. Our projection from sales tax and/or other resources?
And/or other, yeah. You can use impact fees, the sales tax. You could use the local capital, although we're kind of maxed out on that right now. We've gained some room in there, but I wouldn't recommend it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Wilson?
And just a comment, so the board's not caught off guard. This is on the, this is on the agenda tonight to be voted on. Just everybody, give everybody a heads up on that.
Again, because of that window of 90 days, if she, if you do it. Have you spent anything already? You said you started. If we did this two months from now, we would be running in the. That we wouldn't be able to take that piece. If you decided to bond, you would lose out on anything spent 90 days before you do this. So this kind of went a little bit ahead. We probably would have brought everything together. But again, it's just an option, so it's not binding you to anything.
If there are no other questions, we'll move down to the next item, which is the hurricane education recovery assistance for homeless. I believe I have Maria here.
Maria?
Yeah, Maria. My whole team, you want to come in?
The board members, this is our information. I need to bring this forward so we had a full understanding of what it actually was and the impact that it did have on Polk. So I wanted to make sure we also brought that in forward for you as well.
So we're always happy to come and talk to you about extra funds that we're entitled to receive here in the school district. And these are funds that have been made available to us to support students that have experienced homelessness due to the hurricanes, any hurricanes. And it's not a very large amount of money, but we'll take any little bit. And I have the team here because it really has, it was a survival strategy to do this as teamwork. They released this RFA, request for application, two days before the Christmas holiday break. And it was with a deadline for submission on January 11th. So it was a quick turnaround, but very, funds that are needed to support a very needy group of students that we have here in the district. So DeeDee, do you want to talk about how we prioritize the funds to support students who experience homelessness due to hurricanes?
Well, one of the things that we looked at is because, of course, students experiencing homelessness have a tendency to fall behind academically. So we're looking at trying to provide some extra academic support to them, whether it's the tutoring after school or maybe looking into the push-in at the schools. You know, because we'll work with the different principals in schools as we're figuring out what schools the students are still in because these are students that were affected last year. I did run a report. We had over 1,100 students that were identified as becoming homeless because of the hurricanes in the 17, 18 year. There's only 600 and something that are still enrolled in Polk County schools this year. So when I pulled the report over Christmas break, so we have to utilize the funds for those students. But also transportation, because transportation is such an issue for so many of our students. So we wanted to have a component to be able to provide transportation for those students to be able to access those academic supports. And as well, we can also use some of the funds to help to reimburse our district for the transportation for the students to remain in their school of origin. So we have that in place as well. And then also the possible mentoring and looking at if there's any dental or medical extraordinary expenses that some of the families may have, we were able to write that in as well, so.
And I apologize, I assume you know everyone. We've got DeeDee Wright, who is our homeless liaison for the school district and now senior coordinator for special projects. And Andrew Baldwin, who's the director of grants. So that was the team that worked together to make this happen. And I want to add just one additional clarification. We have already received funds through the Restart Grant to support the district with expenses due to hurricanes. These funds are a little bit different in that it's not just reimbursement of expenses that we've experienced due to the hurricane, but we're also able to use these funds current year and through March of 2020 for any additional supports that we need to give these students who are experiencing homelessness due to the hurricanes. So that was a nice flexibility that they offered with these funds for homeless students.
DeeDee, what's our total, I'm going to put you on Squatch Nice, Ms. Miller. What's our total number of homeless students that we have now?
Right now, it's approximately 2,400.
She always has a number.
Last year it was 4,700.
I'm going to say that's pretty much. Are there any questions, Mr. Townsend?
So just very quickly to sort of clarify, these 618 children are specifically related to the hurricane? Their role in, so it's like, you know, almost 25% of the population, of the homeless population is hurricane-created? And that's what we're saying?
Right, well, the 618, that actually comes from, because we had a report to DOE, the number of students that were identified as displaced. So that was handled through Information Services. And on that survey, that was the 1,100 and something that were reported as displaced. And then we had a report of those, how many of them were also identified as experiencing homelessness. And that was 618 that were reported to our heart program for us to be able to capture. So, but as I said, we did get clarification from DOE that the funds can actually, they don't have to be used for the students that were just reported on that survey that was done in May. It's actually for any student who we, as a school district, identified as experiencing homelessness due to a hurricane last year. And so that was 1,195. And 637 of those are still enrolled in Polk County schools.
So yes, your math is correct. About a quarter of our homeless students experiencing homelessness last year were due to the hurricane.
But just a quick follow-up to that. So these 618 homeless children, do we know if they're still home? I mean, are they currently still experiencing it? Or what percentage have kind of found their way?
Of the 618, there's only 280 of those that are still in the Polk County public schools this year. And 22 of them have been identified to us as experiencing homelessness. So we need to reach out to them and find out.
Where'd they go?
Well, a lot of them, a lot of the students were here that, no, a lot of students came here from Hurricane Maria from Puerto Rico. So they moved on to other school districts or even back to Puerto Rico. And also some of the other students that were affected by Hurricane Irma, they have moved on to other districts if they were our students to begin with and then were lost their housing. And sometimes they move on to other districts where they have family and support systems or.
But you raise a really good point. And it gets to every year, we have to identify the student as living in a homeless situation. So, the fact that they were homeless last year, it doesn't mean that they stay in that status. So, we do have to do that legwork and the schools need to report to us that they are still experiencing homelessness.
Ms. Reynolds?
Have we received, this is hurricane homeless related. Have we received any students from Hurricane Michael that we know of or hand handled this year? Or do we have that a handed?
I can check because I think I've had one or two staff members that talked about receiving somebody from Hurricane Michael. But I just was curious if this is something we're going to be seeing next year, but not as...
And the donations that we get during the Christmas holidays, those go when they help those students, that's what.
I appreciate it too very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are three informational items. Are there any questions on item five, item five, six, or seven? Ms. Miller?
The report that's given, the quarterly report that's given on purchases, as a new board member, I would like, can we get a summary of some of this? Because I'm looking at Raptor Technologies and I can go online and see if videos been produced. So, I know that's about our volunteer programs. But serving counters for $247,000, that, I need a little more information when we get these. Is there any way to get like a summary of what some of these costs are in case we have constituents asking what we're spending $247,000 on? Excuse me, so I can explain it?
You can do that after.
Thank you.
I agree because I had to Google a lot of this stuff to find out even what it was.
It's just not time efficient. Thank you.
We'll make sure staff provides that along with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Well, I have, I have a question. It's okay. So, I'm going to get on my soapbox for a moment and I'm going to ask everybody's forgiveness in advance. You know, we, anytime, debt is an important part of financial management of any organization, any household for that matter. But managing that debt is incredibly important. I know that, I think as a district, over the past several years, we've cut our debt from well over $200 million. I think it's about $160 million now. So, and we refinance some of that. And I want to commend the district and Mr. Perom for working diligently to make that happen. As a board, we approved some projects or some initiatives to refinance some of that debt, cut our interest rate. So, as a result of that, what we're going to see is improved credit rating and lower interest rate. On that amount of debt, that could add up to millions of dollars. And I think the other piece of this, the other thing that concerns me just a little bit, and by the way, I, my heart goes out to our teachers and we desperately need to find a way to compensate them better. But I do have some concerns about the fund balance. I guess it's a little lower than I had expected. And I'm wondering what effect that will have on our credit rating and possibly on our interest rates. Mr. Perom?
Yeah, I don't know if you can put a number on it, but they will definitely look at that when they do our rating. And, you know, they'll follow, obviously, the state is 3% or 2% real bad. So, I don't know how much that would mean going from over 5 to under 5. We're at 4.5. I can't really put a number on it, but they do look at, fund balance is something they look at. I mean, it's one of the bigger components when they're doing our rating.
Ms. Townsend?
I have to answer. I mean, we had this discussion going back like 18 months. I mean, that 4.5% is actually pretty good compared to what I, I mean, what I expected. I mean, I, you know, I...
Well, it's 4.05.
Did you say 4.05 or did you say 4.5?
The ending of your CAFR that you just was 18, we're projecting 4.05 this June when we finish because there were raises involved again. So, it's cumulative.
So, no, I'm with you. 4.5, I think, would be a little bit something about that.
No, I don't, yeah, I'm with you. But there's, I mean, there's another point here. The state uses fund balance against you. They say don't go below 3, but they also say you're hoarding your money. I mean, they've said that openly. All these districts are sitting on cash. And when they don't give us the money to operate or don't even allow us to tax ourselves, I think there's, you know, it's a balance. I mean, I'm with you. I'd rather it be 4.5 than 4.05, but it's, you know, it's just something to be mindful of all the time. You're right.
Well, and I think if we, if we're diligent, do our math, we might find that we can offer some help to the teachers by increasing the credit rating and decreasing the interest rates. We may find it there. But that goes to the second part of my statement, which is, and we all met with our state legislators, was it last week, I think? And the one thing that I kept pressing was to stop the rollback of the military rates because that would be incredibly helpful to us. I think that's where we start. So, you know, I hope everyone will join me in reaching out to your state legislators and ask them to stop that rollback. It's incredibly harmful to us and I believe it is to all our school districts out of state.
We've been talking about rolling back the rate for years. Every year, we have the same conversation. And the legislators just are not in a place where they're willing to do it. Doesn't mean that you can't keep asking, but that's not anything that has not been approached for years.
Okay, Mr. Chair, that concludes my portion. If you would like to take a 10-minute break and...
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll have a 10-minute break.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Ms. Fields has some questions about the agenda. We can come back to that. So, we'll review the agenda for this evening's meeting at this time. Looking at the agenda, we have some special regulations. We have three sets of minutes. Any questions, comments, amendments to the minutes? Some new administrators? Two new administrators? Business service items under the consent agenda, items C-11 through C-18. Any questions, comments? As usual, we have a number of donations, both cash and noncash. And as usual, we want to thank all of our business partners and our partners in general for their generous gifts to our school district. Any questions or comments about any of the donations? Facilities and operations, items C-82 through C-85. Questions or comments? Human resource items, C-86 through C-90. Questions or comments? Learning and support services, items C-91, C-92. Excuse me. We also have, okay, we have the school calendar that was included in the human resource items. Any comments about that? Any questions or comments about items C-91 and C-92? We have some new charter review team members that are being recommended or referred. Let's see, Ms. Reynolds, you have one of them. Would you offer the comments and make the motion on that, please?
Sure. And Craig, I believe, is planning on being here tonight as well. I don't know if he might be doing that.
You're welcome to do that. Sure. And I don't know if Mrs. Cunningham will be here or not, but have we got someone who'd be willing to make that motion?
I can do this as well.
Okay, thank you. Business services items, items R-95 through R-97. Any questions, comments?
Is that what the FEMA one is?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, just to confirm that, that's just what it says, that they're paying us back for money we spent on, et cetera.
Jason?
Two things are going on here. It's a master agreement with the state. What's interesting is we work with FEMA to get improved expenses. FEMA says, okay, we'll reimburse you. Then it goes to the state. Then we have to really apply again with the state. This is the first round of $200,000, some thousand dollars, our first round of reimbursement. So, you'll be seeing these come along. But the second part of that is a contract with the state because there's technically the recipient of the funds and we're the sub recipient.
Okay. So, this is like the first, this is the first payback for stuff from Irma?
First payback.
Do we have any guess of what the ultimate payday will be? Or is it, what do you, do we have?
I want to, sort of what is going on now is a battle between FEMA and our insurance carrier. So, I'm, we have on the, we've already spent about $3.4 million to replace building structures and things that were damaged. How much more of that we can get with FEMA and our provision?
Okay.
We're on our fourth round with FEMA advisors, I would call them advisors. They stay with us.
Turnover.
Yes, turnover. So, I don't know if I can answer that question.
There's nothing that sounds more fun than FEMA versus an insurance company. All right, thank you. Sorry.
Anything else? Any other questions about these items? Items, we'll be starting tonight, R-95 through R-97. We have some policy updates. Madam Superintendent, would it be possible to have someone, I know Ms. Dowd is here. Would it be possible to have someone come up and read into the record the changes before we invite public members?
I think Mr. Bridges.
We can do that.
Can she, Mr. Bridges?
Okay, thank you. And then we have the reappointment of an individual to the audit committee. Will you be making that introduction, Ms. Matthews?
Yes.
And then, that's it. Ms. Fields, did you have any questions or comments about the minutes? Okay. Back to our regular agenda. Our work session agenda. The next item on the agenda is the master board program. And Ms. Fields, would you, if you leave that off for a minute since you asked to have that put on?
Well, I was just following up from a previous discussion that we had before. We transitioned from two of the former board members to the two new board members. And this is something that we have done in the past. And we had talked about delaying it until we had the new board members here. And so, now that we have the new board members here, I gave everybody the information at the last work session. And just wanted to encourage us to pursue the master board training. We've been talking about wanting to find a way to build a team and to work together for the good of the students. And I think this is one of the steps that we can take. And there's a menu of topics, so it's not any specific topics that we have to stick with. We can pretty much build our own topics based on what we think our needs are. And we had already registered for this and then we ended up, I guess, having it canceled because we decided not to do it the latter part of last year. So, we're back.
Discussion?
I actually, I think that's a really good idea. Particularly if it involves superintendent, like so it's sort of an interactive, how staff and the board interplay. I think we're kind of in the midst of recalibrating the relationship between senior staff and the board a bit. And, you know, it's a, there are different board members. And I think getting the FSBA to weigh in on that could be very helpful. So, I'm supportive of that. Yeah, I'm not sure what the timing would be, but I'm certainly supportive of the concept. I think it makes a lot of sense. I'm going to talk a little bit about the strategic plan in my comments. So, I don't want it to be something that we do in place of the strategic plan, but that's my only caveat to it.
Can someone just explain what that looks like? Is it a week training or is it multiple training?
It's multiple training.
It's over a year.
No, it's over 12 months.
No, it's not that, I didn't bring my copy today. I have it in my binder. But we do group training with other school board districts initially. And then after that, we select what topics we want and then they come to us. And it's usually like a couple hours of training. It can be in the mornings, it can be in the afternoon, based on everybody's schedule. So, it's very much to accommodate the school district.
As I seem to recall, the last time we did it was a couple of five-hour sessions, maybe?
I think it's like maybe six.
Six hours?
Six to eight hours.
I guess I was reading this attachment set over the course of a year.
I think you just kind of, you can stretch it out that long if you want to. And if you want to get it done in a timely fashion, you can do that as well. It's very flexible.
Ms. Forty?
Is the $4,200 the cost that I was saying?
Yes.
Okay.
To my knowledge, it hasn't changed. Has it changed, Mrs.?
I don't know.
Any other comments or questions? All right, so, yes, ma'am?
Say, I would love to do it. I think we talk a lot about relationships and I think our relationships with each other and to being able to work together is also crucial. Just to be able to communicate effectively, but I think this would be very helpful in our relationship building these forward.
So, we have a consensus and move forward with it?
Yes.
Madam Superintendent, if you could coordinate that, please, or should, or does...
That comes from my...
Susan, Susan, okay, thank you. So, the next item is on our agenda, advisory board for students and teachers. And I believe, Ms. Forty, was this your?
Yes. And I just noticed District 3, not District 4 in the description, just thought I'd point that out. But, yeah.
We're combining.
Well, we already have a, so, yeah, I don't really know what to call it, but I really feel like we need a staff and student committee or board, like just like with the presentation by the new, about the new high school. You know, if we already had that type of committee in place, we would have folks that are, you know, science teachers or fine arts teachers that actually are in a high school that could contribute that information. And I just really want to get all staff, bus drivers, teachers, paras, and especially students. Because, you know, students have great ideas and I think we need to capitalize on the experience that we have in this district of years if you add it all up. And I don't know, I would be willing to head that up. I would be willing to do whatever since this is my only job. So, I have plenty of time to do that. So, I'm offering my services if that's what the superintendent wishes.
If I could offer some comments as well?
Yes.
I was, again, in our legislative meeting last week, I was, one of the criticisms I had of our state approach to education is that we don't involve students enough. Education is changing and the way they learn is changing and the way they perceive information and how they learn is changing. And if we don't respond to that as, you know, as a school district and as a state, I think we're going to find ourselves in a much more difficult position than we do currently. And again, I appreciate Ms. Forty's comments about involving teachers in the design of the labs. I know we went through that Polk State and we went with best practices. And at the end of the day, the folks in the lab said it's not working for us and we had to go back and redesign. So, I think it's a good idea. I think we have to be listening to our teachers and to our students. So, I'm not sure how that, what that would look like or how we would.
Is there, I just want to ask the superintendent, is there anything like that that current, I mean, I know we have separate committees for textbooks and you meet with students for lunches regularly. Is there anything similar that exists?
Well, I do have a committee where I meet with students. So, I have that committee, which is a bridge program with those students I meet with. I believe we have DAC that has set on there. So, you have, you know, you have, there are some teachers on there, I believe. some teachers on there, I believe, probably, and some parents with DAC. But as far as forming another committee of that outside what Ms. Fordy is asking, like an advisory council committee, totally separately bringing them in, we don't have one other than that. And mainly because I look at the hours of our kids, because I meet with them during the day when I can grab them, because I try to grab them from all over, not just one area. And so I look at that. And my only question would be, is that a committee of the board's committee, or is that a committee that we would have to look for? I know the board has certain committees that they have, so is that a committee for the board that's establishing?
I have no idea, but I wouldn't mind that, I mean, I just pull that.
Let me, Ms. Townsend?
I just, I think that's an important thing to define. I think if it's a committee for the board, because of the way we're set up in relationship to the staff, it might actually be less effective. Like, if it's, we're gonna have to design it in such a way, I, my, just thinking irrespective of everything, what might be the best way to design it would be to have, you know, seven people that then has a specific person it rolls up to with the staff, who's at the senior level, whether that be Mr. Hill, or Ted Edro, or, you know, whomever, and that they have a regular set meeting period, and that it's a business meeting where it's like, these are our concern, and that it's kind of structured around concerns or thoughts. I mean, I don't wanna, I don't, I'm just trying to kind of put some flesh on it so that it's effective, because I think it'd be easy for it to be kind of a committee that just kind of dies on its own, and if you're gonna make it sustain, I think you have to design it well.
Yeah. I think Ms. Bill has some comments.
Traditionally, the difference between a committee not being under the board separately, there's a role that's played, like, under city and county, there are groups that get together and advise, but they're not under the, they're not under the board. It gives it more legitimacy to be under the board, because then, when, like, we're gonna, I'm gonna propose that the ESC advisory, which has operated for years outside, become a boards and committee, because then, as things come up, you would present them for review differently than groups of parents getting, or teachers getting together and saying, we have these problems, we want them solved. It's almost a chain of command and putting them in the mix. So I would, if you're gonna form that, I would, you either can do it, some bodies do it separately for a year or two to establish what the committee is and then vote it in, or you start out under the board, just depending on what direction you wanna take it.
So I think Superintendent Burd has some comments, and then back to Ms. Fordy.
And the reason I was asking the board, because it's, will each board member be able to nominate someone to represent their area, or nominate, you know, have somebody brought in from their area?
I'm following.
Because that's what I'm asking, that way, all seven are represented?
Yes.
Instead of just one, so like?
So I get, Ms. Fields?
Ms. Fordy, what would be the goal, the purpose of the advisory?
The main goal would be to assist us in a decision-making that affects our students and our employees. So when, you know, like, we have textbook adoption committees, you know, and you send out an invite and those, but just like with the brand-new school, you know, instead of waiting for somebody to volunteer to feed the boots on the ground, like Mr. Wilson was saying about having to redesign labs, if we already had some sort of a committee in place, or advisory in place, where folks could be, we could draw on their experience, or even, I go back to the hard corners, I hate to bring it up, but had we have had a little bit of input prior, or even buying focus, had a little input from the folks that actually do that kind of stuff every day and have to use it, that would be my main goal. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
So you do have a district advisory council, and I know a lot goes to that committee, which is led by Jeanette there, and also there are, you know, various committees that are out there. Marion, is there a committee that you have with teachers that you help them and ask for those things?
Well, there's a number of ways we do it. We have invited you all into our meetings, we have, we are the bargaining agent for the team, and for the teachers' paras and secretary clerical. We could enhance that perhaps as one way that I can see, and then define what is bargainable and what is not bargainable. We do surveying, I think surveying can be powerful, and then what Sarah's talking about in terms of individual, like, if we wanted to pull together a teacher walkthrough committee on a new school kind of thing, that could easily be done, that could be done.
So between the two committees, because I believe with the district advisory council, I know every area is represented on that council, all southern areas are represented. So with the district advisory council, one of the things we could have, and is very open, is to have students sit in on that meeting, the district advisory council meeting.
When is that meeting? I'm sorry.
I can say future dates. We have meetings monthly.
Because, quite honest, I've never heard of it. I'm just saying, you know what I'm saying? So if we even take something that's in existence, am I still up?
Yes, you're still up.
Okay.
And to be clear, the only reason we wanna make sure that we're not all talking at the same time is just so it's easy to take place.
Yeah, because otherwise I end up at District Four, not here. I get it, so.
Great place to be.
But the, what I'm getting is, we already have something kind of in place that we could actually, like, build on. I don't know.
I would just be, just, you need to define what this is gonna do, because right now the DAC would not get info on hard corners before, we didn't even get it. The DAC would not get info on a new high school. That's not what they currently, it's more, it's, everybody from one school is invited, usually it's a SAC member, so you don't, you know, and it could be a teacher. I don't know, I don't know the content is what you're looking for, maybe a subcommittee from the DAC would be a possibility to talk about content, because you're not gonna get what you just asked for presented at a DAC. It's not their purpose, not what we've been doing.
So mindful that there are certain things that neither committee would get because of security reasons.
Right. But she's, but to get, that's true, but to get the high school presentation, that's not made at a DAC.
Mr. Hill, you had some comments?
So, we were in an ESC advisory meeting the other night, and the meeting, I thought, went very well, some very important information was relayed to us, and then Dr. Steinke and Dr. Aigs put together some next steps. So I'm wondering if it wouldn't be advantageous to build, we've got existing committees, I wondered if we couldn't just utilize those committees to do some subcommittee work, and then make sure that that information gets translated back up through the chain of command to the board, to the superintendent, to the board. So in other words, maybe not reinventing the wheel, but reassessing that, and allowing superintendent to take a look at that, and the board to maybe utilize what we already have in existence, and prove it.
I think Ms. Fields had some comments.
That was basically what I was gonna say.
Ms. Townsend?
Does the DAC report up to you, to superintendent, or does it, I mean, does it ultimately roll up to staff, or does it roll up to the board? In how it answers, does it, is it defined that way?
No.
Okay. So.
Three things just to consider. Number one, this sounds like a very broad mandate, and you may wanna consider tailoring and having more than one, because I'm not sure that any one group can be expert enough on the broad variety of disciplines, but it's something to think about. Number two, to key on something that Ms. Capazella mentioned, need to make sure that it does not become a de facto bargaining table. That is something that belongs to the unions and should not take place in a committee like this. And number three, I would just pitch out to you, if committees that report to the school board directly have to be carefully tailored so that we can make sure whether they're fish or fowl, if they do anything beyond fact-finding, you have to treat them just like, just like the school board for government and the sunshine purposes. So you would have to notice it, and it would have to be a public meeting. You know, when there are committees that report to the superintendent, she can have as many committees as she wants to, they can advise her, and they can, they can do that however they wish. But if it is a committee that is reporting to the board, and that committee does anything more than simple fact-finding, it has to operate in the public, it has to be noticed, there needs to be an agenda, there need to be methods.
Ms. Bill?
We have committees now, we had one that we didn't realize wasn't even meeting, so I think if you have a mission to make a committee, and with a mission statement or a purpose, that would help direct how it would function, and maybe it could join another one that we already have. But you're talking about students, which is a whole different conversation, and teachers together.
Staff.
And staff. That we don't, like, we have an audit committee, we have, what was the committee that no longer, we found out was defunct, and we didn't even know?
Claims.
Claims. So we have committees now that aren't reporting. They're served as fact-finding, and they have a representative. So I would just, you know, I know you wanna move forward and make it a productive group.
Is there anything that stops us as individual board members from having an advisory committee that reports up to us as individual board members? Because I mean, I'm just listening to what you say, what I think I hear is, you want a mechanism for people's experiences on the ground, like, whatever they may be, to get put before the people who have authority in a way that those things get considered in a serious way?
Yes.
That's what I think I hear, and, like, I wonder if the most efficient way is to individually set one up, because then you're not having to deal with it through the bureaucracy, you know, and I don't mean bureaucracy in a detrimental way, like, it's, you're in control of it, and then you can bring those findings, and you can bring, that's just one thing, one thing to consider.
But, Mr. Bridges, before we go down that pathway, if one of those committees reported to a board member, would it still be the same sunshine?
I think a board member generally can, has a right under the Constitution to assemble with whomever they like and discuss whatever they like. You can call it a committee, or you can, you can meet at a coffee house and talk to your friends. What you cannot do is have other school board members attend. What you cannot do is use that as a conduit to broker conversations in private between school board members. So you would have to be very careful to make sure if a board member said, I have an interest in construction, I would like to meet with people in my area who can talk to me about improvements that we can make in our construction projects, that's just fine. But if the board member opened it up, and you had another board member show up, suddenly you've got a, you've got a public meeting that has to be noticed. So yet, you, you need to be careful about those things to make sure that you don't open a can of sunshine worms.
Thank you, Superintendent.
The one thing I'm concerned about, and I'm glad Ms. Capazella brought that up, is the bargaining pieces, because I think that will get muddy eventually when you have teachers and you have staff sitting there and we're doing bargaining. And I think that's what she has a concern about from what I'm hearing back there as well.
Ms. Fields?
I would suggest that maybe Ms. Fordy and Ms. Bird and Jeanette get together and sit down and see exactly what the district advisory board is currently doing, a committee, whatever you call it, and to see if there's any way to intertwine that as a subcommittee and take it from there. And another way that board members can hear from the community is by doing town hall meetings, which is what I did last week, which is very valuable. And you can do that at any given time, you can have your coffee with whoever, whatever school board member it is, so there are many ways of getting feedback from the community and working for the good of the students, so that's just my take on it.
That sounds like good advice.
One thing is that the staff do present to DAC confirmation. So staff goes out and Jeanette sets it up, and they do present to DAC.
And one other, one other thought that comes to mind is, if you're, if you're going to be visiting with Andrea Messina or someone from FSBA, this is, this is a topic that you might wish to discuss. I'm guessing that this is not the first time that they've had a proposal like that, and there may be some best practices on that, how to, how to make sure that they, you've got the parameters you need to make sure you're covering the subject matter you want in a form that is appropriate without violating sunshine laws. So that, that may be helpful.
And you can reach out to her directly, just call her, she'll make you call.
Thank you.
So it sounds like, Ms. Fordy, you're gonna meet with the superintendent and see if we have something existing in place that you're satisfied with, and however that goes, if you wanna add this to an agenda later, we can certainly do that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Leadership Pulp Initiative. Ms. Reynolds?
I, so I've talked a little bit about this at our roundtable, but Orange County, Seminole County, and probably five or six other counties at this point have a leadership education program, which is very similar to Leadership Winter Haven, Leadership Lakeland, Leadership Pulp, except it's run by the school district, and it is a year of school district information. Leadership Orange gave us a presentation at Central Florida School Board Coalition, probably six months ago now, that was really helpful and kind of outlined their tuition's two hundred and fifty dollars. They had two hundred and sixty applicants last year for a thirty-five-person class, so it's clearly there. They use only Orange County residents, and employees of the district cannot apply, because the goal is to get outsiders to understand the district. They spoke a lot about, and as did Seminole and a couple other counties that do it, how vital this has been for district morale from outside the district, because you then have thirty-five people from each class that understand how you make your calendar, that have been through a mock budget presentation with Jason, and then had to create the budget for the school year, and understand the daunting task that some of our departments do, that you can't make everyone happy, and this is why you can spend this money on a football field, but you can't spend it on teacher raises. So explaining those types of things. The way that they, that Orange County has their setup is their morning session before lunch is typically sitting down at tables, getting presentations, that type of thing. And then their afternoons, they have lunch normally at one of the high schools through a culinary program, and then after lunch, they have an activity. So they either create the budget, or they get to drive a bus the day that they learn about transportation and facilities. They have a calendar day where they have to create the school calendar, things like that, that really allow them to understand the district better. So I asked each of these districts how they got it created, and all of them said they had an annoying school board member that wouldn't let it go. So, congratulations, I'm your annoying school board member. Yes. But yes, Rachel and I, Rachel and I talked about it last week, and I know they're working on it in community relations, so I don't know that we need anything from the board for them to.
You're good, thank you. Any other, any other comments?
Well, just one quick thing on those ones. Like, for Leadership Lakeland, as I understand it, that's a pretty much full-time job for one per person all year round. I mean, it's a fairly large lift, I would think it would be a pretty large lift here. I think it's a good idea, my only, my only concern is, is what priorities will fall off, what spending won't happen if we do this, and so it would be nice to hear what your thinking is on that, you don't have to give it here, but like, as you emerge from what you're doing.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that was kind of, when I sent this to Rachel, our conversation was, let us know what you need, because I think this is something that's crucial to our PR, and so I don't mind fighting for it, if it's something that, you know, I think that that's, it's gonna be an additional thirty-five people every year that are gonna go out and speak on behalf of the school district, and would take a bullet for us because they now understand our practices and why things happen to be the way they So I think that's, and as far as funding, I mean, Orlando, or Orange County, it's two hundred and fifty dollars, they do have a scholarship rate that's fifty dollars, and they, I think they said they have five people on scholarship every year when they gave the presentation.
So financially, it's self-staining?
But financially, it supports itself.
Yeah, yeah, so it's mostly the use of staff, staff time.
Right, yeah, it's one day a month, and they run it, I believe it was eight or nine, I don't know if you remember the rates, eight or nine AM until two or three PM, so it's during.
It depends on the site they're going to.
It depends on the site they're going to. You know, sometimes they would go early to see the entrance of a school and how it happens, and then one of the times they were doing the bus driving. It depended on where they were doing, but it's kind of like by the leadership classes, it's about a six-hour day.
Ms. Miller, I think you got some comments?
Could we get a presentation from PR with a proposal of what that would look like?
Right, that's.
I'm thinking, you know, it's a great opportunity for the public to learn about us. I'm just, I do have concern that they're overwhelmed right now and how that would look, and who it would reach and how we would reach them. But like, a simple like how-to and this is how it would work, I think would be beneficial.
What, how do we feel about partnering with Public Vision? And maybe us managing the day, whatever that is, whether it's going to a school, and maybe having them manage the process itself, where they're collecting the money and selecting people? Would we be open to that?
Absolutely, yeah, if that comes out, that would be great. There will be, there will be a good deal of staff time involved. I think we can kind of spread it out, I mean, when it's transportation day, obviously, we'll get lots of people involved. It won't be entirely PR, but nonetheless, there will be a lot of staff time involved, so certainly can be open to that.
And they know how, they know how to do it, so they might handle the process. Madam Superintendent?
I was going to suggest, it is a good idea for we can get more good news out for us. And I just want everybody to be aware, we're not going to stand it up like next month. It's going to take us some time to plan it out, so that we can bring all that back and say, here's what it looks like, here's what the price, what it can entail. And we can definitely get with Kim. And we probably need to look at, you're talking about scholarships, so we need to have more conversation on with Orange County, how do they do that? So we just need to have some conversation. But I think we just need to make sure we plan it well. Because the one thing I hate to do is when we do things and we throw it out there, and it does not go well with our community. And they don't forget that. So I just want to make sure, you know, it's going to take some planning time. But I think the more people out there telling our story helps us.
Ms. Fields?
I think it's a good idea, two statements. Staffing, making sure that we don't put more than the staff already have on them. And then keep in mind that Public Vision has a very small staff as well. And so we have to make sure that they can take on something, because they've already got a couple of leadership programs on, one for youth and one for adults. So just keep that in mind.
Just, I mean, ideally, if it's self-sustaining from a funding point of view, that might include hiring somebody part-time who ministers it, so that we're not, like, again, that's much the, if it's, if it's, if it can pay for itself, including someone whose job it is to oversee it, I think that might be ideal, because then you're not adding to the PR burden, and so just a thing to think about.
Very good. Any other comments, thoughts? So, Ms. Reynolds, you're on the Education Committee of Public Vision, aren't you not?
I am.
Actually, can we clarify that? There's not an edu, there's two committees that are the Education Committee, right? You're on both of those now?
It's attendance literacy, talent pipeline.
Okay, so you've gotten rid of me? Okay, good, I want to make sure.
I'm replacing him, sorry.
Could you protest that? Or were you going to call?
I'll talk to him.
I can talk to him on the phone. Okay, okay, thank you. All right, so the last item before we get to board comments is the roundtable discussions that we had. I thought those were productive. We had a couple items on our agenda that came out of that discussion. I'm looking to the board for advice as to how to move forward with that. Do we want to do it, number one? Number two, how do we manage the public input part of it? Because you might recall that we had a couple folks who were disappointed because they hadn't waited till our discussion was over, so we wanted to figure out how to address that. And, Ms. Miller?
I think that that was the biggest feedback. It was, I think it was very productive, and I was surprised how many staff members showed. It gave them the opportunity to come because it was held the time. And I think Lori, like, we had had the discussion of, at the last work session, of possibly pushing it up so we could have a meeting or an open discussion at four or earlier, and then public comment would be advertised at a certain time, maybe 5:30. And that way, if they're only coming for the public comment, they would have the time to come. So they're not, there was one person that had a child, and she emailed me later and said she wanted to stay. She didn't realize it was, that was the format. So I think if, as long, I mean, I think it's, I've heard nothing but great response from those. So I think if, once we settle on the format that would work best and timeframe, that we'll see even more come from those.
Okay. Yes.
I'd say I agree.
Yeah, I agree as well, I thought it was great, it was almost exactly what I had hoped for. I do think, one of the things I would like to preserve down the line is that for individual board members to be able to set a specific topic. I mean, I think of, to think of these as like enrichment discussions as well, where we could bring some particular area of expertise from outside, who can talk to us about X, Y, or Z. So if we build into the formatting on that, you know, like, what you've just discussed might actually work for that. Like, where you come in at four, and then we, or come in at five and advertise at a 6:30, or, you know, however we want to do it. I think that would accommodate one of the, that thing that I would like to see, plus the public comment as well. So that's my only input, if people are okay with that.
And I also wanted to talk about keeping transparency with the public. We were able to provide audio clips, but we need to provide the same thing we do for these sessions with the public. Like, we need to be able to video them. If that's, you know.
Okay, I would agree with that, too.
Ms. Fields, did you have some comment?
I listened to the audio, and that worked well for me. I don't know how it would work for staffing, as far as happening to do the video. The only thing that I would say is, when we had discussion on how it was going to flow, I had said, would there ever be any discussions about possibly policymaking? And I think there was a couple of conversations that was very close to that. And I just would encourage us to make sure that when we're having those meetings, that we, one of the goals initially was just to get to know each other, and just to, just have general discussions of just making sure that that's what was said. That it is so that everybody can get to know each other in a comfortable environment. That's what was stated, and maybe that's not what was meant, but that's what was stated. And so I'm just, from a side view, for whatever it's worth, it might not be worth a nickel, and that's fine. I just think that we need to make sure that anything that's going to be discussed at the board, that we're going to have to make a decision at the board, that we shy away from discussing that during the roundtable discussions. Unless we're going to say policy discussions could be a part of the discussion, and if it is, then the ones that's not maybe planning on attending need to make sure that they're aware of that.
Yes, sir.
We had two or three things come out of that as agenda items. I don't know if that's considered policy. I think it's inevitable, when we get together, the whole point of this is to be able to talk about things that lead to policy. I mean, our job as a board is to make good policy, hopefully. And it's information gathering and talking through things that are going to lead to policy. What I think, what I remember being said was that there would be no votes. There would be no, like, you know, not even unofficial votes. You know, just talking through things, you know, what our positions are individually, things we might want to have as agendas, philosophical things we have. I mean, I think all those things flow into policy eventually, but I admit, so I think the board, that meeting, the subject matter of that meeting was precisely what I imagined it being. So that's what I would say.
And I tried to be very sensitive to that, and I thought those were the two things that, from my perspective, were more policy-related and that we did get them on this agenda to talk about. So I apologize, there was something else, I don't recall that, but certainly appreciate your comments and agree that we, well, I'm not sure that we, I'm not sure that we can avoid, Mr. Townsend said, policy discussions altogether, but certainly there's going to be some that's going to be even, we're going to ask the board a consensus on, that we certainly should bring that to a regular work session. Yes, ma'am?
And I would just say this, and I'm not going to be back and forth on it. That's why we have work sessions as well, to talk about issues along with the items that's on the agenda. So we might not bring this on, but at least I have, I've had my comments.
Any other thoughts or comments? So what I'm hearing is that, once a month, we will continue the, whatever we're calling them, roundtable discussions, starting at, but we need to ask the superintendent, because if we start them at four, and then we have public comments at 5:30, and we're going to video that, then we have to have, we have to have staff.
Sure, can you and I meet?
Sure. So, I'd like to meet with the superintendent before.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, ma'am?
I don't want to delay the roundtable discussions, so I don't know that that needs to be a caveat to not deciding when to hold them, how they're going to be recorded. But I think that was what the, what I understood the discussion to be, it would be a time to expand. You know, we've had a lot of discussion in the community and at the district level on behavior. So if there's a, you know, something that we can talk about and expand the conversation, that's what that would be used for. Or techno, you know, technology pieces, or even different programs. But I would not want to delay the scheduling of these based on how they'll be reported out.
And my, Ms. Ford?
I agree, and I thought we had discussed that we would do it on the early work session day. Did I dream that?
No, we can certainly do that.
We did discuss that, I'm sorry, I think we did discuss that.
Okay.
If we were doing it earlier, not happen, because last time, because of timing, we got done at noon, and then those, I don't live as far as, I know Lori and Lisa, but to have three or four hours, so what do you do for, it would be easier for it to be two separate days, I believe is what they're.
Ms. Townsend?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I mean, I care more about having the meetings than what their specific structure is, but I would tend to agree with Sarah Baff on that, that having two way apart on the same day, I think is probably inefficient for all of us. And, you know, I would prefer that we do them on standalone, like, that they're standalone meetings, but I'm not going to get anybody's way. If the only time we can schedule that is a double up like that, then okay, but.
Let me respond to that just very quickly. I think we could do them the same day as a work session, except for the public input part, because that's, that's the part you have to wait till later in the day to do. And I have some additional comments and concerns about that, but I want to.
That was going to be my comment, is that, you know, if we're having the early work session, and it typically, you know, could we just tack on to the end two hours to, if you can stay, have an expanded discussion about whatever it is we want to talk about?
That gets back to what the original preference was, to try to have this when we don't have the time pressures of the day. So we're not, like, or at least, that was, again, if I'm overruled on this, I'm overruled. But the idea was to have it in the evening as a whole, I mean, I hadn't suggested on the weekends to start with. So we're not like, the workday is always pressing down on people, the idea to be, have it outside of that, so we have a little time to speak. But I'll, you know, that's, my preferences don't have to be what matters.
So again, I think, from my perspective, the question is, how important is the public input part of it? Because if it's just the board, after a regular work session, we could do it after that, and there is no darn time constraint, we have all afternoon.
We could be here till seven if you want.
I think, I think the public decided it was pretty important. I mean, I was, I was kind of surprised by how intense that got, so, I mean.
And I agree, but, and that brings in a couple of the questions that I'm going to need some clarification on, some direction. We have a policy, three minutes to speak. We would have to, I think, address that policy if we continue with the approach we used before. Am I, is that a fair statement, Mr. Bridges?
You certainly could. You know, it was expressed upfront that this was not intended to be a regular meeting at the school board. You could define this more concretely, if you would like, as a matter of policy, and specifically allow for it. I think there's some flexibility when you've created something new like this that really isn't defined by policy to maneuver. And there are all sorts of, you know, one thing I would observe is there's, there's nothing that you can do at one of these that you could not do. For instance, when you have your board member comments during the work session. I understand Mr. Townsend's desire, part of it was to have it at night, so that people who could not be there in the afternoon could be there. But there's nothing that you're doing here that you could not do in a board meeting or a work session also.
Well, then, so I'm not going to run any concerns, any problems as far as you're concerned, if, for example, someone exceeds three minutes?
If you're, if you're going to, if you decided to do it during a work session or during a school board meeting where you have a policy that says three minutes per, then I think you would need to address that.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Townsend?
No, I was just going to say, I mean, I'd be comfortable with it being board discretion, I mean, board chair discretion to say, look, we're going to ask you to keep it to three minutes at my discretion. You know, I trust you to do that, you know, or the chair. That might, I thought people were pretty reasonable about.
Yeah, they were quite reasonable, but on a couple occasions, there were folks who who had things they want to share with us that exceeded that.
Right, and you could say, oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am?
I had one other thing, because I think when you originally started out, I don't know that we had public input as part of it. It was just going to be an expansion. So if you want to say, I mean, and I have no, I could be the way on this, if you wanted to say public, these are going to be, you know, you'll have access to these to look at. If you have comment, we have board meetings, you can come and speak at the three minutes, your three minutes. I'm okay with that. The other bodies that do this don't have public input. They just have an expansion of time and topics. So as a board, that might be something you would prefer. I'm not opposed to public comment. But I understand it's not, it might not work to have it at that setting.
So we're, we're in agreement, we're going to continue these, but we're just not sure how we're going to continue with the public input part at all, because the superintendent wants to share some thoughts about that. We'll meet on that and then come back and figure out how we want to address that. So we'll schedule them. Let me figure out how to do that.
The next one would be in February, at some point, like we have a February one.
Wait, are we agreeing on that? All right, board comments?
Just going to say, I got, two things. I think, and they kind of relate to each other. I don't think that I support the transportation plan right now. And I'm not clear whether we're going to vote on that, whether I get to vote on that, and that is sort of a sense, a source of confusion to me. I, what I specifically think I don't agree on is, I don't think it remotely solves the problem that we've identified, which is, we've got a $12 million funding gap for buses, that's a long standing ending. This is a relatively small amount of money that cuts back service. It looks to me like we're more likely trying to get out of the business of transporting some people that carry liability. Just how it feels to me. So I don't, I don't know where to go with that. And so let me put that aside. That kind of relates to what Ms. Field said, and that's why I think the master board training is actually a really good idea, because I think we need to have those kind of questions sorted out. Like, what we're going to vote on, what we're not going to vote on, what is staff able to just do versus not just do. And I think it'd be good to talk those things through. That also relates to me to the strategic plan, and, you know, I, there are two things I want to be clear about that I want. I want to be able to vote on the agenda for the strategic plan meeting. I want to look at what that agenda plan meeting is, and I want a review of what the goals are and talking through what's a goal and what's a priority and those kinds of things. And then I want to vote on that plan after, you know, after we're done. The, and I can be clear, I will not vote in favor of the plan if it doesn't have a priority for work environment, if it doesn't have a priority for program implementation, and if it doesn't have a priority for openness and transparency. It is my assumption that we're doing things every day to try to make the work environment better. I think HR some time ago talked about some things they were doing. I am not looking to create. to create anything new, I am looking to get documentation of what's being done about certain prior, priorities. I think if you look at the board docs question, that is $30,000 of wasted money. We bought a program, or not we, the, the previous board did, and it never got implemented, and it's still sitting there, we still own it. Some, there's no accountability for that, there's no accountability for program implementation and manag, management now at the senior level, like, we need to be able to evaluate that. Sarah mentioned folk, focus, I'm not even willing to say if focus is any kind of failed implementation, I, I know these things are extremely difficult to do. My, but I don't have a real good sense from the, you know, I would, I would like for staff to make a case as, as to why it's successful, or not successful, and match that and pick that up. Those are the kind of things I'm looking forward to be able to evaluate as a board, board member, so I don't need to belabor all of that today, but at some point prior to our meeting in March, I want to look, I, I want to get a chance to vote on the agenda, and then I want to vote after the plan is formed on, 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 on whether that, on what the, the, the plan, plan is, and if I can convince folks to come along would be great, if, if I can't, I can't, but I do want to be able to vote on, so, that's, that's, that's my, that's my take.
Any, any other comments? So, yes, ma'am?
The agenda typically is created by the chair and the facilitator, and then is given to the board to review, and to see if anything needs to be added or taken away, if my members heard me correctly. So, everyone will get an opportunity to review the agenda before the retreat, just higher than has been done in the past.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So, you know, I've tried to be very sensitive and listening carefully to, especially to the concerns of the new board members, and also to respect what we've done in the past, so what I'd like to do is just kind of share with you, propose, the proposed agenda. I have asked Dr. Preo to, I, I think it's important to have some feedback from staff as to, as it relates to our previous goals, and where we are, and how we got there. I, I have suggested to him, that he related superintendent, we keep that to an, to an hour and a half, so it's very brief, and I would hope that we would, it would, my intent that we would stick with that schedule. There would be a discussion of progress report in general from the superintendent, and then the rest of the meeting would be a discussion of our strategic planning, our current strategic planning, our goals, and how it's where we want to move forward, so that's, are we, are you okay with that, Ms. Fields?
Yes, I just think that it's going to be very important, as in the past, where the staff can list out some of their strategies, and how they're achieving that, so that it is transparent, and that there is evidence that some movement is occurring.
No, I agree. Mr. Superintendent, is that sound reasonable to you?
You can still do that, you want to just condense the time, so.
Yeah, the response to, because we do need some feedback, I think it's only fair, the staff worked hard, I think we should hear from them, but I also understand, and we've, we've done this in the past in strategic retreats, spending a significant amount of time talking about where we want to, how we want to move forward, and where we want to go with the district, it's, my personal experience is that, you know, it's not a great idea to be changing things on a dime, but we need to have that conversation, so.
That, 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 that structure fits, fits me fine, that's okay.
Anybody else have any concerns about that? And I'll say, I'll have, Ms. Wharton can send this out for everybody. Okay. Are you okay with this?
Yes, I understand.
You haven't seen this one?
No.
I apologize. So, we'll get that out. And there was something else you mentioned prior to that, prior to the strategic-
Oh, the, it, it kind of relates to, the, it, it was, it was, it was like, the, the transportation issue, I've got a number of concerns about that now, and I don't know what powers I have to do anything about that, I just don't, and that's part of working out, and that, that's, that's why I thought Ms. Ms. Fields' idea about asking for was good, I mean, I, I guess if you want me to revisit what I said, I, I don't, I don't think the transportation plan cuts are addressing the problem we say we're addressing with it, we're not, all we're doing is cutting minimal service, like, I, I think, if you look at it on its face, what it looks most like is we're getting out of high-risk transportation for charter schools, I mean, that, 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 that is what I sort of look as, as the most likely case of that, and I would rather have a discussion about that and, and bring some of our, our charter school folks to, to bear, and, and just have a bigger, bigger discuss about what, what we're trying to accomplish here.
Yes, we, this is my take on it, I, from my perspective, what I heard was that we simply couldn't find bus drivers, it was all, the routes we were trying to take, we weren't able to get the kids on, on school on time, which, that, I think that, am I correct, that was a real problem we were trying to solve, and, and it wasn't financially related, it wasn't a financial issue, I, I think that somehow came to bear, but I heard as being, we, we know we have a shortage of bus drivers, because here's what we said, we do bus, so we have a shortage of bus drivers, we're not, we're having a difficult time getting students, getting students to school on time, we're having to pick them up early in the morning, I think that was the problem, and Madam Superintendent, if you'd like to elaborate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that, that is the problem, back when the bus drivers came and spoke, spoke with us, many of them and the area managers, I had several meetings, and the number one thing, well, you know, first was discipline, the next one was getting the students where they need to be, they were struggling getting them there, they gave some very good examples of having kids, they were trying to get from one side of town to the next side, and they had 45 minutes, and they were not making it. We've heard from teachers, and I attended the forum, Mrs. Fields' forum, and a teacher did stand up and say, how do we stop the students coming to my class late when I'm being held accountable for their instruction at the end of the year, they have not received the full instruction? So, we're talking about, they're getting there late, and teachers having to stop instruction and start over again, or that kid misses instruction, and so we're hearing it from the classroom, we're hearing it from the drivers, the main thing is getting those students into class so they are not missing instruction. If they miss 10 minutes each day of a reading lesson, they cannot get that back, and that teacher cannot keep going back over and over and over again, that is what we're hearing, we're hearing it from the teachers, we're hearing it from the drivers, and we're holding teachers accountable at the end of the year for a full 180 days of instruction.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to address that, and it's kind of a twofold thing, but transportation, so transportation is first, and then second, I'm hearing what everyone is saying here, and I can tell you what the community, because of the little information that was given to us at the beginning, and I just want to run down some dates of how I received information as a board member, on 12/9, I talked about communication and how that would be made, and how we would get information, on the 11th was the meeting, I asked for info, because we had nothing giving to us at that presentation, no, nothing, I asked for information on the 17th, the first information I got was the 18th, I asked for additional information on the 19th, and then we were giving the funding gap on January the 9th. On January the 10th, it didn't answer, that, no one was answering the questions I asked, so I was told there was a principals' meeting, and we would get that information, so on the 11th, I got a compilation of every question I've ever asked into one document, with more than half of it saying, we don't have, that we need more time to collect information. So, if we're going to present, if staff is going to present, and this might be at the board training, or even at the retreat, or whatever, we need info upfront, we are the arms length, you know, communication piece to the community, and when this goes out in a PR release on the 17th, and I don't have anything on it, and people are asking me questions, it puts me in a very difficult situation, so I'm asking for staff, if you're presenting on cuts, or things that would affect the community like this would, that we need that information at the time that you present. It's professional, it's not anything, I'm not asking for anything beyond just proving your case, because what we gave them was saving $136,000. And when I get reports back from charter schools, that serve children with disabilities, telling me not only do we get, it's not, you know, we're describing it as courteous, they pay us FTE transportation, at the end of the year, what they owe, they pay us again. So, we're not, the dollars amount, the message we sent was we're saving money, when actually the message was we needed drivers. And in another charter school, they ride the bus of, Lake Wells, Victory Ridge rides the bus of Roosevelt, so we're not going to gain drivers by taking those routes, you might gain time, you might make up time, but I know, I need good information to show the public that cutting 12 drivers, or 10 drivers, would get the students to class on time, those are two separate issues, I don't know that cutting 10 drivers will get Kathleen's kids to school on time, but if I had that in the presentation that was given, I could relay that, it's, there's too many holes, and that's when you get the community questioning what you're, what we're doing, and why we're choosing to do it that way.
We're not reducing drivers.
But you're gained, but you would gain a driver, you're saying we need to cut these charter because we need to gain drivers.
No, we were saying, by, by cutting those out, we can get the students to class on time, if we can acquire more drivers, it wouldn't be an issue.
Do we, do we have, do we show, do we show like hours, I mean, I'm, I could give you the data I'm asking, but I'm, I'm hoping our staff, they're, I mean, they're very confident, they're very, I know what they're, they know what they're doing, but I need something that says, if we cut this many routes, or for these schools, it will gain us these many minutes, and it will, you know, I need good data, and I, and I'm not getting it.
That's my point as well, I mean, to the, to the point you've made, there's no presentation of how this plan solves this problem, like, it's, it's, and that's, that's what's concerning to me, because when someone asks, asks me, why are you doing, 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 doing this, the, the only answer I have is, because staff says so, and, like, that's, take the problem, work through why these specific routes will create better on-time delivery, if, if, if that's the issue, and, and, and go, go from there, but I mean, I think additionally to that, you know, the, we, I, I, I know Rob met with, 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 it just connect, and I'm very, I'm very pleased with that, 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 that meeting happened, that's addressing, you know, like, we should probably be meeting with, particularly the special needs charter, charter schools, I'm less, I'm less, I'm less concerned about the, the, the normal ones, but the, the special needs ones, we should have meetings with them, and if the answer is no, then the answer is no, but let's figure out what they have to say, and, and, sorry, somebody's-
I'll get back to you, Mr. Davis, Ms. Fields?
I think, I think that there definitely needs to be some discussion with the charter schools, and I think that we need to have some information, and it probably doesn't need to come from Mr. Davis, it needs to come from someone who's an expert in transportation, because utilizing the Sisters Connection buses, it's not like using a school bus, those buses were not designed to transport children, they don't have high seats, so there's some liability there as well, and I think all of that has to be, and then the other factor is, I know when we had this discussion, we talked about the money, really wasn't the issue, the issue was getting kids to the school on time, and, and making sure that, that they were in a place, a good place for learning, that's my understanding, and I think maybe the driver issue came up just a little bit, but I think the biggest thing was listening to the, to the bus drivers and what their concerns are, and I just think it, it just needs to be rolled out where it's clear, and I don't know, we have a frequently asked question sheet, I don't know, I don't know what we have, I just, I just think, let me just start, need to sit down and, and get a little bit better organized, and make sure that the community knows the issues, and are we the only school district that's transporting charter school kids right now? I mean, if we are, then we need to say that, so that it can be understood, but I am concerned, I would say, about the special needs of children, especially the ones that are small nonprofits who don't really have the resources to do their own transportation, and how those kids are going to be able to be transported to their schools, and if they don't get transportation to their schools, are they going to end up having to come back to the public schools where we might not be able to provide the level of services that they need, so that's, it's just a whole lot.
Mr. Davis, did you have some comments?
Good.
Yes, ma'am?
I, I actually had this on my list to ask about as well, I know that I've had contact with a couple of charter directors, and they are having a tough time getting appropriate contact to even find out what's happening, according to them, and they asked me to reach out for them, the appropriate folks in transportation, the changes, they finally did get a letter, you know, now we're going to roll into February, and they have to start making plans, you know, and our, especially our special needs kids, but, you know, I just think we all need to communicate a little better, and like Ms. Fields just said, you know, frequently asked questions, but this just feels like it's going to be another blunder as far as treating our folks fairly, and I know they're charter schools, but they're still Polk County School Board kids, you know, they still live in Polk County, and I just, I know I've been hit up by three directors already, they're just having a tough time getting answers from transportation, and a lack of communication, and they want maybe just even a year delay so they can plan a little bit, so that was what I was going to add.
Mr. Davis?
May I address more, Mr.?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is a service that is not required for us to provide, so it's one piece of the puzzle, we're looking at the entire transportation operation as a whole, and we do that every year, so when we're looking at charter schools, we did this several years ago, where we were at the same situation, we couldn't get students to school on time, and we, we cut out charter transportation at that point in time. Macillia Academy went into transportation, Lake Wells Charter School went into transportation, Compass Academy here in Bartow went into their own transportation, Dehunder Two Miles was another portion of it, that is not required to provide that transportation, we were looking at that, we're also looking at the distance between stops, we're working with Sisters Connection to try to see if there's any way they can assist us, it's not simply cutting charter school transportation, we're looking at this as a holistic approach, and to say that we're not giving, we provided a letter with our contact information, we're trying to get a committee together to sit around with the charter schools so that we can brainstorm to see how that, the system can, we can help holistically, but to say that we're doing it as a liability, that's not the case, Mr. Townsend, not, not, not at all, we've been doing Achievement Academy for years, we've been doing Victory Ridge for years, it's just simply, we're, we're putting things ideas out on the table to say, these are ways that we can cut some services so that we can get students to school on time, and that is our biggest challenge. Yes, I, I put a cost savings to it, because we can combine that and, and save some money, but the, the true fact of it is, is that the students that we are required to transport, we're not, we're not getting them to school on time, or getting them home in a decent hour, and that's the, that's the, that's the case in a nutshell.
Ms. Townsend?
And I guess, I think Rob made a, a point there that I think was very illustrative of what the, this is why I mentioned this in, in context of a larger issue, we talked about, we talked about having a, a, a committee to talk with the char, charter schools, but it sounds like we did that after we told them we were dropping, whereas if we had done that before, we said, guys, this is the problem we're, we're facing, you know, if we go to our stakeholders, and they are stakeholders, we tell them, this is my problem, and here's how doing this is going to solve this problem that I have, it's, it's going to inconvenience you, I'm sorry, what can we do to ease the transition, how do, I'd be okay with that, like, if, if, if I could say you had had those discussions with them, that you went there first, and, and laid out what's going to come, then, then, then I can deal with that, you know, and, and if that has to be the thing we have to do, then that's the thing we have, we have to do, and I think, this is why I tied this into the strategic plan, and program implementation, and all, all of that, and openness transparency, is I see a lot, in my two years here, that instead of going, here's the problem that we're going to attack, because it's a problem, we come up with a solution that we drop on, on people without preparing them for the problem that exists in the first place- that exists in the first place as, as to why we're doing, doing it. And, like, that's kind of basic stakeholder management and, and that is a place where I think we need, we can get much, much better in. And when I say I don't support the plan as it is now, I don't support the plan as it is now because we haven't had a discussion with, with the charter, charter schools. I might support the plan if I could, if I get the outcome of what that, of what that discuss, discussion is, but I just don't know enough, like, as to why we're doing it and how this is going to solve the problem. How taking those drivers away is going to relate to having better arrival times. That case was not made to us. No one made that case. If you had made it, I might have accepted it, but it hasn't been made yet. And so, I'm left, I'm left to, to come up with my own motivations and I take you at your word, Rob. You're, you're, you're an honorable, honorable guy, okay? So, that's, this is a, an important issue in its, in its own right, but it's a bigger issue in terms of how we deal with the pub, the public and stakeholders. And to me, it relates to the strategic plan. So, that's my spiel and done. So, with this. Well, I'm sorry, I mean, we still, are we going to vote on this? I mean, what, what is going to happen with this?
We, as a board, we gave consensus to move forward with not providing transportation to charter schools. We did that as a board, so that's moving forward.
Well, I'm, I'm revoking my consensus. So, that, that may, that may not matter to, to anyone, but as I have learned more without, I mean, we didn't take a vote, we had a consensus. I'm, I'm now no longer on board with that consensus.
And I think Chair, Chairman, that needs to be a question asked.
If we gave our, if we gave consensus on something that wasn't giving us all of the information or part of the information, then that might not stand. Because I received afterwards the information from the charter schools about how much money they pay us and what we've released to them with a dollar amount didn't add up. And so, I think that's the whole thing about giving us good, and Rob does a great job and I just think it needs, across the board, how staff delivers information needs to be addressed. Because if we didn't have, we made, we made a decision based on the limited information verbally that we got at a, at a work session. Come to find out later, there was all of these other things. And this district is very compliance-based, but we do a lot of things that are outside of, I mean, we do a lot of things over compliance. I don't know that compliance should be, you know, or for measure. I don't, it just doesn't make good, it's not best practice, it doesn't make good policy for our kids. The only issue I would have is I would like to see on paper that taking away these drivers is going to get these kids, all of these kids, this massive late-to-class issue we have, this will solve it. I don't imagine it will, so it will come back on us again when the kids are late and they said you were going to solve it by taking these charters away, those charter buses away.
That's a piece of the puzzle, Ms. Miller.
Right.
That's not the whole, the whole, there's other things that we have to do as well, but that's just a, a portion of it.
Saying that, I need good data. I'm just, I'm data-driven. I have to show that. I've set an IEPs for way too many years of my life not to have good data. The other thing is, yes, Mrs. Fields is right. Achievement Academy serves three to six most profound medically fragile kids. So, when we stop providing that transportation, they're going to return to our schools and what will that look like? So, we need to be very, we need to understand who will be affected in this and how we can reach out to, if that's what we have to do, make it as easy for them to transition. I just would be very cautious of how we make, how we give consensus as a board when we're making it on verbal statements that aren't, you know, and that's our fault as board members not to require that at the time.
Ms. Fordy, excuse me. Ms. Reynolds, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I think this is our life, reduce next to you. I, and this is not just directed at you, this is for any time we're making a decision that affects our charter schools and the public. We live in a very different age now than we were 10 years ago where everything is online almost instantly. You don't even have to wait until the next morning when the newspaper comes out. So, the biggest complaint that I've gotten from a couple charter schools is they got their certified letter, it was dated, I believe, either the day of or the next day, but they didn't get it until four or five days later. So, by that point, they had already found out that we had voted or that we had given consensus via Facebook. So, they sat kind of in limbo for a few days. So, if we are doing anything, and this is for anything that we do, if we can send an email, send the certified letter still, but at least let them get the information from us as quickly as they're getting it from Facebook and finding out online, because I would much rather us be able to tell the story than a tweet or a Snapchat.
Mr. Bridges?
Thank you, sir. I am always in, in favor of better communication whenever we can, whenever we can do that. It, it is not, not clear to me that anything untoward has actually happened of when you look at the, at the contracts. I think what happened is, is exactly what the, the transportation contracts with charter schools contemplate, you know, that within the discretion of the department. If, if it is available, the district can offer, can offer it on an annual basis. If it's not available, they, they're not required to. And there is a notice requirement in there that, that if we're not going, if we're going to discontinue it, that we have to produce that notice for the following year. And I believe that is what happened because when it, when it came out, I took, and it's been a few weeks now, but I took a look at the contract and it looked like they had done what they were supposed to do in accordance with that. I'm not sure that the board in, in previous years has been asked for consensus about things like that when it's something that is already in the contract and is designed to be something that's discretionary with the department. But it was very wise of them to bring that and if there's more conversation to be had about this, very wise to continue it so that you have the opportunity to, to weigh in with any criticisms or suggestions that you may have. But I did want to set your mind at these, I think the contract that we have with charter schools, not talking about the other topics that they talked about, the two-mile and courteous, courtesy of transportation strictly the charter schools, but I believe what they did complied strictly with the requirements in that contract. We can get you a copy of that as well. I think Rob has copies of the contracts with, with all the charter schools. We can get you a copy of the, of the standard contract that they used and that may be useful as well. Absolutely understand the communication, that it would be, it would be critical in a case like that if you're going to have the conversation, to have it at a time when it's meaningful so that the charter schools don't have letters in their hands before you get to talk about it and things like that. But I think they were, they were trying to do what they could to follow the, the prescriptions of, of the contract itself with regard to notice for the following year, not for the coming year. Rob, did I get that right?
Yes, sir. And, and we brought it to the board so that before we made that move, we had a consensus. And as soon as we had the work session on that Tuesday, the letters went out on the following days. And I can understand Facebook and tweets and letter reports go out before those certified letters reach the charter schools. But we, we provided contact information, we have received information, well, we received phone calls, we've received emails and we're trying to respond to those and, and try to get a group together to see how we can help this transition, if there is a transition.
Ms. Fields?
There was a lot of discussion that was had at the last work session, so I would have to go back to what Ms. Miller just said. If there was a concern on anybody's behalf on whether or not this should occur, that was when the time should have been had. And there were a lot of unanswered questions last time we had discussion about the transportation for the special needs students. Ms. Miller brought that up. And so, now we're in a place where the letters have been sent out and what do you do? Are you going to reverse and, and say now, Ms. Fortney said something about maybe giving them another year? I don't know what the answer is. I know that it's already been given to the, to the charter schools. I do know, and I think we need to really have some discussion and, and maybe get Dr. Aix and Ms. Jackie and others about how it's going to impact Achievement Academy and the kids with those special needs. If they're not able to provide transportation for those kids, where they, where are those kids going to go and who's going to be able to service them? I, I think that's a very critical piece. Doesn't matter what we do here today, but I think that, that's something that we really need to be thinking on. And Ms. Jackie, I don't know, Ms. Bird, you might have some thoughts on that. Are we going to sit down and talk to them and help them get the equipment and the tools that they need to transport those kids?
And we are doing our very best to, to help them through this process and we said that in the letter.
We said it in the meeting as well, that we were working good faith with, with absolute dedication and compassion to all the entities.
Have we set the meetings yet?
One at a time, please, so that we can, we have a good minute. So, did you have a question?
Have we set the meeting yet with the provider?
I had a meeting with, we are in the process of doing that. We had a meeting with Tom Phillips, asked him if he would join us in that meeting with the Polk Transit Authority and, and bring that group together and so that we could address the concerns that they have with that. So, we're hoping to do it very quickly.
Adam Superintendent?
What I just want to add is that I know, Mr., there's no ill feelings about Mr. Davis that he was doing everything to make sure we get the children to school on time as we've had told the drivers and area managers. He had, he is setting up the meetings because he did share that with me last week, I believe, that he's in the process of setting up the meetings and talking with those charters now. But we wanted to bring the letters to you first and I believe we've got feedback from you all on add certain things to the letters so when we send those out. So, the letters are out and they're going to meet with them. We do have the buses. I know we've been asked about the lift, the buses with the lifts on them and all of that. So, he's making sure of that and transferring all that information over to them. So, you know, he has, you know, made, made himself very available to them and has made his team available and that's why they're meeting with Tom, with them as well.
Townsend?
Well, I, to address Wes, I mean, I think Wes is, Wes was addressing a concept I don't think anybody has alleged. I don't, I don't think he did anything untoward. I'm not, I mean, this, this is, this is, and I don't think you did it, yeah. Anyway, I mean, I think this is a organizational issue. Like, it's, 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 it's an important issue in its own right, but it's also an organizational issue. And, and one of the things we asked for from that meeting, because I asked for it, was a one-page that I could have what, that, that says boom, 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 boom. And I don't, maybe we got that at some, some point, but we, but we certainly didn't get it before, before the letters went out. I didn't have anything in my hand to be able to make the case for, for you. I don't know if you guys understand, we're out there trying to make the case for, for you. Believe, believe it or not, when I can't make the case for you, I can't make the case for you. And I am more than willing to admit that I was dumb in that meeting and I should have put my foot down and I, and I should have said, "Nope, we're not going to move forward with this." Or at least, you know, I didn't. That's, that's on me. I can assure you that will not happen again. And, you know, this is clarifying. You know, I, I, that's, that's, that's all. And, and again, I don't, this isn't about you, Rob.
Ms. Miller?
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate it, Rob. He's probably one of few that I can get info from relatively quickly. But my question is, like, part of the data that would have been helpful and maybe we can get now is if Victory Ridge students or charter ride on a public bus with a public school Roosevelt, by removing those stops, is that going, like, to show on paper that that's going to get Roosevelt to school faster? Like, that's what we're looking for. Like, how, how we're removing kids who already share busing is going to help Frostproof get there any faster? That's the data that we would need for the community.
You know, and just, just very quickly, you know, personnel matters fall under the auspices of the Superintendent of the State of Florida and don't necessarily have to come before the board. Now, we, they brought it before us and I, and I am very sensitive to our community and, and responding to them. I think what I, from my perspective, I think the bigger issue is, as Mr. Townsend said, if we had met with them and, and had a, a relationship with them and, and trying to solve the problem together, it would have been immensely helpful to us as a board in, you know, supporting this initiative. So, I think that would be helpful to us moving forward.
Yes, ma'am.
And what I would say, Mr. Chair, is that, and I, and I get that they got it via meeting and everything, and we did not meet with them because we wanted to bring it to you first because if they would have met with them first, then you would have had phone calls too. So, we wanted to come and meet with you all as a board for us to say, "Here's the direction." But I would tell you the FAQ's that...
They're online, they're on the homepage of the website now. We got them from Mr. Davis last week. They've been posted and they've been showed, shared out on our social media as well.
I'm sorry. What did she say, the what now?
FAQs.
You said something about personnel issues. I'm not, I don't understand how bus, the scale of bus service, service, or this is a personnel issue. I don't understand that. So, maybe, I don't think we're talking about personnel issues here, maybe I'm wrong about that. And that's it. That's great.
Well, I think the core issue is bus drivers, which is a personnel issue. I mean, we're, we're saying...
We're talking about the routes, we're talking about the routes.
But what we're saying is, you can, we'll give you a bus. So, it's clearly a personnel issue. It's not having, I mean, if we could hire more bus drivers, if we had the money to pay them, I don't, would this be an issue? I'd ask it.
If we were at our maximum capacity with bus drivers in attendance and had a cell pool, this wouldn't be an issue. That is correct.
Mr. Bell?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Ma'am.
Bus driver, it's either a bus driver issue or not because one of these charter schools rides on a bus with public students who already have a bus driver. So, it's either a bus driver issue or it's a route issue.
But I think, here's the confusion. It's not an issue of removing bus drivers, it's an issue of adding more because the routes are too complex and we can't get students to school on time. So, if we could add more bus drivers, it would solve the problem. It's not an issue of taking them away. So, the real issue is the routes we run are so, are, are too lengthy and are too complex to get the students there on time. So, if we had more bus drivers, we could add more routes. That, I think that's the core issue.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we're beating a dead horse to death here. I think at the end of the day, we have to believe, we don't have to, but we have a choice of either believing that Mr. Davis knows his job and the Superintendent knows hers and they're working hand in hand to do what needs to be done so that we can get these kids where they need to be, or they're not. And Ms. Bird, I would really appreciate it if somebody could give each of us a copy of that FAQ because we have not seen it. And some of the questions that we're having right now might be already answered, it was just not how they answered, it's in front of us.
And, Mr. Davis, it's clear from the board that there's still some concern about ESE students. And I know you are working on a committee. Would it be possible, Madam Superintendent, to at least have that conversation with the ESE charter schools and see if maybe they have some ideas about how this results matter? Is that, is that a possibility?
Can I, can I say something to, to Ms. Bird? I, I, as one woman, I'm just speaking as one, I would much rather you talk to the affected stakeholders before you talk to me. Like, if, like, I, I would rather, I would rather hear from them, say, "Hey, Mrs. Bird, talk to me about this, what do you think?" Than drop it on the, the public with them hearing, hearing, hearing nothing. I'm, I'm just one. I, you know, I, I can't speak for, for anybody else, but I think that's a much better way of managing the public and, and the stakeholders. I'm not that important. Like, the people who, who are affected are important and, like, from, from my, from my point of view, I just want to be clear, I, I'd prefer it to flow in the other direction.
Ms. Miller? All right, any other board comments? Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I had two more. They relate. Actually, this is still part of that as far as communication. I don't know when that board training will be and we might need to take this up before that board training, but I still need a procedure or policy on how emails are sent out and returned. Thankfully, I, you know, I get some things back very quickly, but, you know, December 13th and December 9th, for, for minimal request, I don't even know if they've ever been received. There's no receipt for the email or a response that we need, you know, I don't, I don't know how you worked for so many years. We need a policy on how these things, how we communicate. And so, maybe we need to wait until that board training and, and talk about, you know, in general how other boards communicate, but I'm not talking about who we communicate to, I'm talking about the response to a board member. Because as a community member, my response time was 48 to 72 hours and I'm weeks in for asking, "Can we get this on the website?" I don't know that you ever saw that email. So, I don't know that needs to be an agenda item, but I think we need to come with a consensus that, or work on that communication. with a consensus that, um, our, to work on that communication between requests, um, not asking for reports or long data, the simple requests. And I could ask, you know, I could tag receipts on it, I just think that's a, you know, that's a level that is a little, you know, primary, but I could, if that's the suggestion of the board. That was my, my one thing. I don't know if anybody else gets, has the same issues, or it's just me, and mine are not flagged as, I don't know, maybe it's too many, I don't know. There's two actually, two or three. Most of things are returned, um, relatively. The transportation thing was just drawn out for a month. But there's a couple others from December. One asking for a link, if we could give information to the public via the link, and the other one, um, if we could talk about effective communication policy due to the problems we have with emails. Am I the only board member with that issue?
Yes, ma'am.
Suggest, Ms. Miller? I would suggest you sit down with Ms. Ms. Bird, and you all work through the process of you not being able to get the information on the time and fashion, and then there is a policy that says if there's too much work, it's gonna be required of staff. The superintendent has to bring it to the board, and then the board determines whether or not the staff needs to spend time on that issue. I'm not saying what you're requesting is in fact in that category, but I'm just saying I think that would be a good start.
We could do that, and I think it might be, if Joanne's overwhelmed, we need to know that. Um, I don't know what, I don't know what the holdup is.
Ms. Miller?
I just wanted to say, there was one that was sent to the chair, and he and I kind of, we had a conversation about it. I believe it took Mr. Pitts eight hours to compile that one, am I correct?
Yes.
On the weekend. So that one was sent, and that's where it says, no response on that email, because I sent that to the chair, because after Mr. Pitts had phoned, it took him eight hours to hold the debate on that one, and there were several others to go.
No, the, the one you're referring to is about transportation, and if Mr. Pitts or whomever would've given that information at the session, I wouldn't have requested it. Um, I think that was the one that he compiled, and half of the answers were, we don't have the information right now. And so I don't know how that was eight hours, but I, and I get it, and I'm not here to argue the point, I'm, it's a matter of fact, you can look at the, the sends and the receipts, and as a board member, I just would like some kind of policy to be followed, to where if I'm asking this one specifically, um, the website's still being updated, I'd like to request that we have schools listed with regional superintendents, because communities asking me who their superintendent is. Thank you for your email. That's what I got on 12/13. You know, so those things, and I know Joanne is trying to read, and it's not the superintendent, she's very busy and has other things to do. So I know her staff is reading through these things, but we need to make sure that we're getting responses. Thank you for your email on December 13th is not satisfactory.
Okay.
And the only other one is really, is really positive. Um, I wanna, I thank Dr. Aix and Mr. Hill for coming out to the Polk ESE advisory meeting. Um, that was last week, I didn't know they were coming, I attended as a parent of a child who's McCade, um, and had spent years in the system here, and I think they got a great feedback from the community that was there and agencies that were there, and the advisory is being restructured with, um, at one time, we had a business advisory, we had kind of two groups working at the same time, but they ended up being the same groups of people. So we condensed the committees into one, um, which is the ESE advisory, which has been around for a long time. And I'd like to put it on the agenda to have that moved under the board for a couple of reasons. One is a great, um, would serve a purpose in reviewing, ESE has such a large spectrum of services and, and staff, and it, it really covers more. I, you know, Dr. Seiki, to be able to manage that is, is, um, I give kudos to her, to anyone that can take that on. But something as simple as the collaborative report that we referred to in the last work session that we did in 2007, that cost us $52,000, if you, if we could bring that to the, we talked about redoing another review of services here, but before we do that and spend another $50,000 on review, that advisory would be a great opportunity to, to look through what we've done, because I can tell you, um, I looked through it quickly, and though we've accomplished a lot of that, and the laws have changed, there were at least 10 things on that report that we did not implement well. And so, as a community, um, person, asking about dollars spent and how we're using them, I think it would, that would be one tool we could use to hear from the public on what's working and from staff. But to do that, I think we need to, um, to move it under what we do with audits and other, it's such a comprehensive, um, subject matter that I think they would be successful with, and I'd love not to be the only person on the board represented. Um, I think Ms. Fortney has taken time with that advisory, and maybe she would be interested in that. But, um, having a voice for the 20,000 students being affected by our policy, I think, would be appropriate.
So we, uh, again, what I, what I hear you say is you would look like that to be moved from...
A community of people that get together because they've requested to.
And report to the board.
Yes.
Now, there currently, there's an advisory board currently in place.
There is, but it's in a trans, it's in a transformation time, because at one time it was with bylaws, and it did, it was, there was a reporting factor to it, it was never listed under boards and committees. But now they're gonna have to redo the bylaw, so it might not, it might take a while for it to get there, but that's, that's the goal of that, of that group.
Okay. Ms. Fordyce, can we end that as a workstation agenda item? I think everybody needs time to consider that, Superintendent, I'd like for her to have an opportunity to think that over.
Sure.
And then we can talk about that, Ms. Miller, maybe. Um, yes, ma'am. Any, any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Oh, sounds like what I wanted to do for staff and, uh, students, but, okay. I just have a couple of, uh, things. I, I just wanna feel like every single time, uh, that it's time for me to speak, I wanna beg for a social worker and a mental health professional at every single school, and whatever we have to do to make that happen. Our, our kids, uh, we, it's imperative, it is imperative. Each school needs their own social worker boots on the ground to go check these kids out, uh, as far as mental health professionals, uh, you know, suicides, things of this nature I've had to deal with in, in the classroom, and we just need mental health services at every single school, dedicated social workers. Already took the other things. I, I don't know, Mr. Perone, I, I guess I can ask him. This Sunbelt, uh, insurance worksite marketing contacted me, sent me a letter, uh, but it's addressed to Mr. Harris. Uh, but could I ask to speak with you about this? They gave me a whole stack of stuff that I just don't understand. And then, I was wanting to know if there was an update on, um, all of, uh, Mr. Hill, about the PEA meeting and the questions, and I wanted to ask about that, and also about the, uh, communication on the board.
So, uh, obviously, I would love to move faster, but that was right, here's some breaks and holidays, but I have been looking through all of those suggestions, along with going back to originally looking at some of the previous information that, uh, Ms. Capazola shared with me. You know, it occurs to me, there may be some, uh, there may be some, some items that we can, can affect quickly or quicker, but there's some complexities there and some systematic pieces. So what I've done is kind of gone through and I've tiered them to see, you know, which ones would probably be something that deals with, uh, something we can effect change at a school-based level, leadership level. What are some that's gonna take district and, and work, um, significant work with, with, uh, Mary Ann and her team, district personnel, and some of those more complex issues. And then, basically, what structure or what process are we gonna use, what, what mechanism, if you will, to make sure that two things occur? We wanna, we want to, one of the things that kind of has resonated in my mind is, some of these issues didn't just start this year, some of the issues have been ongoing. And so if we're going to try to effect systemic change, and we're gonna try to make sure that that systemic change is something that we can continue over time, then we need a, we need an excellent action plan for that. And it's gonna take a number of, of different, uh, groups within our stakeholders to make sure that that happens. I know that goes right into where you're at with the stakeholder at foot. So, what I'm gonna do is present to Mary Ann, I requested a meeting, set a calendar note to sit down with her, and then I'm gonna sit down with Cabinet, sit down with ASB, sit down, and, and kind of walk out from there, the different entities that need to connect with or stakeholders we need to connect with. So that's, that's where I'm at, and...
I have one little follow-up. Do you have any kind of time certain on that?
Um, I've, I've requested a meeting to, to sit down with Mary Ann on the 28th. I haven't had a chance to look at my calendar, let me see, on the 28th of this month.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
That was it.
Thank you for the, the question. Appreciate it.
I'm just speaking as one board member, but I can say this based on what I've heard from the board in general, Ms. Miller brought this up a few minutes ago. I think it would be helpful, I believe it would be helpful if, when staff brought things to us, especially things that, um, have a far-reaching impact, that we be given the information that we'll need. I mean, it only seems reasonable that there would be some anticipation of the questions that would be asked, and that we could get information so that, as Ms. Townsend said, so that we could advocate on your behalf. It does become challenging when, you know, when things come before us, we're asked to make a decision, and then it's, it's a little bit awkward. I mean, in most boards, constituents aren't coming to the board, right? But we're also elected officials, so it's a, it creates a little bit of an awkward situation for us, so I think that would be, that would be helpful. And I would agree, Ms. Miller, we, we need to have a discussion about what the expectations are in terms of, um, how we get answers from the district, and, and I know that's forthcoming, we're gonna be talking about that.
Thank you.
Any other, any other board discussion, board comments? All right, Madam Superintendent, we have this one at four.
So far, we have no parents.
Anything else for the, goes in order as it relates to this meeting? Meeting is adjourned.